Welcome to the Tuesday, April 1st, 2025 regular meeting of the Ann Arbor Planning Commission. And for detailed information on meeting procedures, please be the full-printed meeting agenda provided. Manager Kelly, will you please call the roll?
Commissioner Lee.
I am here.
Commissioner Weiss.
Here.
Commissioner Hammerschmidt.
Here.
Commissioner Abrams.
Here.
Councilmember Dish.
Here.
Commissioner Mills.
Here.
Commissioner Wetherby.
Here.
Commissioner Adams.
He is here grabbing water right now, which is FYI.
Commissioner Norton.
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve the agenda? Moved by Commissioner Mills, seconded by Commissioner Weiss. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, the motion carries. May I have a motion to approve the minutes of the March 18th meeting, 2025? Moved by Commissioner Wetherby, seconded by Councilmember Dish. Is there any discussion of the minutes?
Yeah.
Okay. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
And any opposed? I'm abstaining because I was not present at that meeting, which is FYI. Motion carries. Next up are reports to the Planning Commission and written communications. We are gonna go with Councilmember Dish.
I am happy to report that I have nothing to report, because this is April 1st.
Oh, thank you. And then, let's go on to manager report, and I'm gonna slow it down to manager Kelly.
For your upcoming work session, which will be, I believe, on April 8th, there is a presentation by Kayla Coleman on discussing how you would like to proceed with the capital improvements plan. Also, I would like to report that since the last time, at least, that I was at a meeting, maybe this was announced, we have hired two temporary planning interns, which we hope will assist us with the variety of tasks that are before us related to the comprehensive plan draft and public engagement, as well as doing some much-needed data gathering and other department projects that are a variety of internal and external facing. So, Emma Berger and Beth Hartzog are very welcome to Planning Services.
Great. Thank you so much. Do other commissioner liaisons have anything to report? Okay, seeing none, written communications are included in today's packet. We're gonna move on to public comment, just as a point of clarification. If you are here to speak on the comprehensive plan, the time to do so is now. You could wait till the end, because it is a, I think it's an unfinished business, or, because it's a, yeah, other business, there isn't a public comment at that point. So please speak now if you are here to talk about the comprehensive plan. So with that clarification, this is an opportunity for individuals to speak up to three minutes about an issue that's not listed as a public hearing, the KACOM Plan. We will first hear from those present, and then remote participants. To speak remotely, please press star nine if on the phone, or use the raise hand feature on Zoom. And for phone access, please call 877-853-5247, and enter meeting ID 977-66341226. City staff will identify callers by the last three digits of the phone number, if available, or by name on Zoom, and you'll hear an automated announcement when it's your turn to speak. Please move to a quiet area, and mute any background noises. For all participants, please do state your name and address at the beginning of your comments. Would anyone like to speak at this time? Welcome.
Hello.
Hello.
I'll introduce myself properly this time. My name is Jim Pike. I live at 912 Pomona Road in the 5th Ward. I'm here today to ask people to consider a question in good faith. The question is this: How is Ann Arbor going to remain a successful city? In a 2023 interview, when answering the question, "What are the characteristics of a well-planned, functional city?" community planning, redevelopment, and urban design consultant, James Amor responded in part with the following: "The very best world cities seem to combine foresight and planning with an ability to optimize recurring waves of growth and development." I'll repeat those last words. "An ability to optimize recurring waves of growth and development." Successful cities must grow. Part of that growth must include the addition of new housing stock. We already have the job-growth component of success here, but we need more housing for those job holders. So the heart of the matter is simple. Either we want to make more housing available in a broader range of types and locations, so that a greater variety of people can live in this successful city of Ann Arbor, or we do not want to make more housing available in a broader range of types and locations. I think there's good reason to expect that if the city of Ann Arbor stops growing, then the city of Ann Arbor might also become less successful. Everyone should, in their own hearts, answer some simple questions. Do you want more housing built in this city, so that more people can live in this city? Do you want to welcome more neighbors into Ann Arbor? Or do you want to keep those people out? If we answer that we want more housing and more neighbors, we should then act in accordance with that answer by actively supporting policies and plans, including a new comprehensive plan, that will enable more housing to be created within the city limits as widely and as flexibly as possible, because the gatekeeping of overly restrictive, overly complicated zoning created the housing crisis under which we now suffer. We cannot expect to retain the benefits of living in a successful city while saying no to the growth that makes a city successful, year after year and decade after decade. I want Ann Arbor to be a successful city. I want more housing in Ann Arbor. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Good evening. I'm Alex Low. I'm living in Pittsfield Village right now, and tonight, I, like many others, want to talk about the comprehensive plan. Specifically, I want to plead with each of you not to implement the types of policies being touted by Donald Trump. Donald Trump's platform includes enforcing zoning that excludes anything other than detached houses, enforcing sparsity, and taking America back to the good old days of the 1950s. Ann Arbor needs to fight against this. We need density. We need to legalize housing, and we need to make the city open to everyone. I did an informal survey recently, and 60% of the respondents said that 48 feet or higher was an appropriate minimum height for new buildings downtown. 49% of respondents said that 55 feet or higher was a correct minimum, and over a quarter wanted at least 75-foot minimums in downtown Ann Arbor. Please ensure that the new comprehensive plan contains reasonable height minimums, and, more importantly, please ensure that we do not continue the restrictive zoning policies passed by a Republican-majority city council, and which are part of the Republican Party's manifesto for keeping Americans separated from each other and disconnecting cities from being open, welcoming communities. As an immigrant from South Africa, Elon Musk does not speak for me, and he never did. I do not want the disastrous policies his family supported to be repeated in this country, and that includes exclusionary zoning, which was used by the apartheid government to enforce racial segregation. It is time to allow buildings that are merely the size of our beloved downtown library everywhere in Ann Arbor. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Welcome.
Hello. Hello, friends. I'm Sarah Lorenz. I live at 1784 Sido Church Road. I am the, oh, I also wanted to thank you for your public service by serving on this Planning Commission. I appreciate your hard work. I am the executive director of the new Ann Arbor Community Land Trust. We are a nonprofit developer, working to develop moderate-income homeownership opportunities, especially for critical employees that allow this city to function. I've passed out a flyer to the commissioners and to the audience to show some of what we are doing. On the front, you'll see our coming-soon flyer with the homes that are currently listed on Zillow, although the first round of these homes closed yesterday, and we are working on our lottery process to select the buyers for these homes that will be built over the next 12 to 18 months, or sooner, if we have the support of the Planning Commission and the city council and the planning department. But I wanted to share especially the price points that we think we can achieve: $125,000, $225,000, and $325,000, which is really what we're desperately in need of. I'm now gathering an amazing buyer survey. People are filling out the survey, and telling me the housing that they need, that they are desperate for. So many people feel like homeownership will never be an option for them. I'm hearing from University of Michigan employees who are literally homeless, staying with friends because their rent is so high. It's tragic. Children who are separated from their divorced parents or their grandparents, who could care for them because they have to commute so far. So, we really want to build these homes quickly. If you turn over, I wanted to show you some of the homes, the designs that we're also looking at, that I would love to be able to build with changes to the code. If we could do two to four units per parcel, we could do more of these small homes, and these townhomes, ranging from 600 square feet to 1,300 square feet. I think these would fit beautifully in most neighborhoods in the city, and we would love to do more of this. At the top, you'll see a cottage court neighborhood facing a green. We're attempting to do something similar to that on South Maple. We've assembled four parcels there that equal over an acre, and we'd like to replicate something like this, and really build a beautiful community of support for the new residents, as well as the surrounding homeowners. So we're looking for your support, and looking forward to building these homes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello.
Hi. My name's Anthony Devie. I live at 2434 Laurelwood Circle, Ward 3. I'm speaking in support of the Ann Arbor Community Land Trust. I work full-time at the Ann Arbor District Library, going on 15 years now, and I make $53,000 a year, and I was just pre-qualified for a home loan at $225,000. Currently, there are no small houses in that price range in Ann Arbor or the surrounding areas, but there could be if the Ann Arbor Community Land Trust gets the help they need to build affordable homes on the properties that they have purchased in Ann Arbor. I've been starting to think that the idea of being a homeowner in the town I grew up in would be impossible, but the Ann Arbor Community Land Trust gives me the hope that someday, people like me with similar incomes like mine could potentially own a home. That's all I had to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Kim Winnick. I live at 1045 Olivia Avenue. The draft proposal of the comprehensive plan is flawed for many reasons that have been previously raised. If adopted, it will essentially permit the building of an unlimited number of mixed-use units in residential neighborhoods without meeting any design criteria, provided only that some basic form factors such as height setbacks, et cetera, are satisfied. Nearly $800,000 has been spent by us, the taxpayers, to develop a rather scary and ridiculous plan that could have been developed over a long weekend. No data was presented as to the cost of building, not including the cost of land, to see whether affordability could be significantly improved by the proposed upzoning, nor was any data presented on the effects, both positive and negative, of upzoning on affordability, infrastructure, and quality of life in other communities. This is a major deficiency. The plan development was an amateurish effort at best, with a preordained outcome. Equally troubling is the fact that serious community input was not sought, and the consultants were directed to produce a plan aligned with the interests of the mayor and city council, rather than those of Ann Arbor residents. The involvement of outside money and interests have also raised serious ethical concerns. An example of this is the recent exposé appearing in the Michigan Daily on Heidi Posher, her felony convictions, her campaign contributions, and her interactions with our elected city officials. Unfortunately, this is but one example of the sorry state of our elected city government. This, however, is a topic for further discussion, future discussion. The feedback that the Planning Commission has sought for their draft comprehensive plan proposal has been primarily performative and not substantive. As you may recall, the mayor and city council recently appropriated $100,000 of our hard-earned taxpayer money, so that they could keep the residents of Ann Arbor informed, in quotes. The cynics among us might call this "taxpayer-provided campaign money for the incumbent." In any case, given the significance of the comprehensive plan in shaping the destiny of the city, shouldn't a great effort be made to engage the populace? That $100,000 could be well-spent in mailing postcards to every property owner in Ann Arbor, informing them of the plan's highlights, namely, no more single-family zoning, mixed-use permitted in all residential neighborhoods, no restrictions on the number of units, no design rules, et cetera. Ample time could then be afforded to solicit feedback, which I suspect the mayor and city council are not interested in hearing. There is absolutely no need to rush this process. It's more important that the final plan reflect the will of our residents, rather than that of a small coterie of special interests. I'm extremely disappointed with our elected mayor, elected city council, and appointed Planning Commission. We want our voices to be heard, and we want our city government to work for us, the residents, and protect our interests. P.S. Today, the agenda for the evening's Planning Commission meeting was updated to include a proposed change to the draft comprehensive plan. I think it's a minor tweak, and people are hoping that we just accept it, but I think it's barely any better than what's currently on the table. It's very vague.
Thank you. Thank you, Kim. Welcome.
Good evening.
Hi.
My name is Chris Vandenberg. I live at 802 Edgewood Place, here in Ann Arbor. Thank you for letting me speak. In the Ann Arbor Government website, the new comprehensive plan, in big block letters, is followed by the sentence, quote, "The city of Ann Arbor is developing a new comprehensive plan to forge a new affordable, sustainable, and equitable vision of the city's future." Consider your word affordability. Councilwoman Dish admits the plan will not increase affordability. Consider sustainability. Is the city's Office of Sustainability on board with this? I've read the last three newsletters published by that office in 2025, and there's no mention of upzoning. To their credit, they have actually a newsletter. I praise them for their outreach efforts. I participated in town halls with Missy Stoltz, director of that office, and I remember being in a room filled with whiteboards and residents and businesspeople, brainstorming and writing down ideas for sustainability when she was setting up that office. Her efforts continue. What are the Planning Commission's outreach efforts, and how do they dovetail with the Office of Sustainability? For the average resident to go to the Ann Arbor website and find a string of projects being considered by the commissioners don't help. The average resident doesn't even know where to start. I first learned of the upzoning effort when an activist left this flyer at my doorstep, six pages. I'm sure you've all seen it. Of course, it is negative, but after three days, I've only had it for three days, so I'm doing a little catch-up, I have since yet to find anything in it that I can refute. I would love, I mean, I would really love to see something meaningful, a rebuttal to this flyer from the commission. How about some positive advertising and positive facts, so I can help make a reasonable argument to any of the several people I've interviewed since receiving this? The reaction I have received has been uniformly negative. I enjoy a community where I live in a single-family dwelling. I see and interact with neighbors. On the other hand, it's hard for me to imagine a large apartment next to me, with its concomitant extra traffic, lack of grass, lack of trees, and neighbors I know. I can't believe the majority of residents in Ann Arbor would be in favor of this, with a lot more positive and rational information distribution. If the vast majority have never heard of this, I would be in favor of putting the whole thing to a citywide vote, whenever you come up with a good plan. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hello.
Mark Skirbo, 2017 Fair Street. Ann Arbor is a very educated city. That's why I was surprised when the city sent out a comprehensive land use plan FAQ that didn't include any mention of research results from the urban planning field. For example, the FAQ doesn't explain the well-researched filtering effect by which new construction, i.e. luxury development, makes homes more affordable, even for those who can't afford the new units. In fact, cities that have built the most new luxury apartments have seen lower rents at all price points. We know the big-picture ideas on how to address the housing shortage. Not only that, but we know the specific policies that can enable more affordable home choices. The biggest mistake the city could make would be failing to stand for those specific policies throughout the city because of a few loud voices. Though, we know that the people who show up at public comment tend to be older, whiter, and land-owning, even though the majority of residents here are renters. Those loud voices have said things like, "City council and the Planning Commission in Ann Arbor have lost sight. The rot goes all the way, and it's the whole city. Nothing in this plan is for the people who live here now. It's for the people in the future, and they don't vote." Another voice has said, "When development enthusiasm rises, there are ways to slow it down. Slow it down by challenging the community participation process, as having been too small. A good lawyer could very easily win that case." These loud voices don't represent Ann Arbor's progressive voters. A representative survey last year showed that more than 50% of residents feel there is too little multifamily housing, and 72% say we should prioritize controlling housing costs first, and support environmental sustainability, and subsidize affordable housing as secondary priorities. Allow me to run through some of my policy stances. I support heights of 48 feet in low-rise zoning districts. I support having two zoning districts. Not two concepts of a district that become the 34 we have today, but two. They should be a low-rise district and a mixed-use hub. The latter district would have built-in height limits and stepbacks based on proximity to Lowe's-rise districts. The mixed-use hub district should have, should include an expanded downtown. The low-rise district should support commercial uses such as cafes, childcare, bars, neighborhood retail, et cetera. Thank you. A constituent once asked State Representative Carrie Renegans if she supported background checks for criminals who are applying for rental housing. Instead of placating or evading, she said, "Everyone deserves housing, even murderers." I think you and I are just gonna disagree on this one. I have incredible respect for politicians who stand up for what they believe in. Planning Commission has done this. I hope city council can do the same. Don't water down your commitment to growing Ann Arbor. Thank you.
Thank you. Hello.
Good evening. My name is Suzette Wannenkopf. I live at 225 Mary Avenue, and I am a car-free homeowner. I'm here to voice my strong support of the proposed comprehensive plan. A denser, more walkable, and bike-friendly city isn't just an abstract goal. It can be a reality, and it is a necessity. More housing means lower costs, more options, and a stronger, more vibrant community, where people of all incomes can thrive. Density makes it easier for residents like me without a car to get around safely. We can reduce traffic, emissions, and lower our city's carbon footprint. This plan is a step toward more accessible, sustainable, and equitable situation in Ann Arbor, where people can live close to work and school, and get their daily needs done without car dependency. A better, more affordable, and connected Ann Arbor is within our reach. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. My name is Brendan Roos. I live at 127 Field Crush Street, apartment 203, and I've been a renter in Ann Arbor for six years. I'll actually be starting a master's in urban planning this fall at the university, so this is sort of, I don't know, fun to get a look at the whole process. I'm here to thank the Planning Commission, the city council, and everyone involved in developing the comprehensive plan process for their hard work, and to express my general support for your demonstrated commitment to tackling the housing crisis that our city faces. This issue is very personal to me, as someone who is currently priced out of the downtown area. I've lived in four different apartments over the last four years, trying to keep my costs at a reasonable level. When I tried to renew my lease at my last apartment, the leasing office told me that they would be increasing my rent by 10%. This was not affordable to me, so I moved away. They knew that even if I couldn't pay that much, they would be able to find someone who would. This is a supply problem, and the answer is, of course, more supply. The economic evidence overwhelmingly shows that upzoning increases density and improves affordability, and the comprehensive plan in its current form is a step in the right direction. To that end, I also have some feedback on the plan that I think could help it meet the stated goals from the city council. Improvements include eliminating mandates for office and retail in certain corridors, as these could constrain housing construction in the future, allowing more flexibility in low-rise areas, especially in terms of height, and eliminating the transition zone, which is redundant given the existing taper between low-rise and high-rise areas. Many existing developments in these areas would be illegal under the transition zone's height limit, which is the opposite direction from where we should be going. Given the timeline of this plan, I feel that more flexibility is always better, as we can always fine-tune it when it comes down to draw, when it comes time to draw out the actual zoning laws. I know that many of the long-term homeowners who speak at these meetings and have written in have said that they are the city, but I'm also the city. It isn't just students who are burdened by high rents. For every homeowner worried about their neighborhood character in the future, there are nurses, teachers, university employees, and countless other professionals who keep our city running, but can't afford to live here right now. Thank you for your time, and go Blue.
Hello, Commission. I'm Jonathan Levine, 456 Hilldale Drive. I want to thank the Planning Commission and the planning staff for your direction in crafting a plan that will allow for increased supplies of housing, increased urban compactness in Ann Arbor. This policy shift is so important for a number of reasons. First of all, it is a necessary, though not sufficient, condition to meet so many goals that we've already set for ourselves. First is carbon neutrality. It's actually quite simple. Cities are relatively low-carbon zones. Keeping people out of those low-carbon zones forces them into high-carbon zones. And by the way, you have an electronic version of my remarks that is full of links and urban planning research, et cetera. Affordability. When new housing is constrained, the existing housing stock becomes increasingly unaffordable. Conversely, new construction can improve affordability. The affordability impact of new construction in high-accessibility areas stem not only from the price of housing, and this is an under-reported effect, it also stems from transportation cost savings. Transportation is the second item in our budgets after housing, and when we can live in areas that allow us to reduce our transportation, notably to reduce our driving, we improve affordability that way. Vision Zero, traffic danger. The United States is the most dangerous, has the most dangerous transportation system of all our peer countries. It's actually quite shocking when you look at the numbers. The added danger that we face stems from a combination of road designs that are unsafe, particularly for pedestrians and cyclists, and the fact that we drive two to three times as much as our peer countries. So that extra driving exposes us to further danger. Exclusionary land use regulations exacerbate this problem by forcing people into longer-distance car travel, for both work and non-work purposes. Overcoming racial exclusion. Single-family zoning was born out of an explicit desire for racial exclusion. This is not even a question in the historical record, and low-density and single-family zoning continue to exacerbate segregation to this day. Fiscal soundness. It's actually very simple. Sprawl is subsidized, compact development pays the bills. Why is that? So many of our costs of infrastructure and services are tied to land area that's served. less affordable. Finally, all this can be done in ways that are very amenable and supportive of neighborhood quality and environmental soundness. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. Good evening. My name is Hannah Reichel. I live at 921 Raymond Street in the Eberwhite neighborhood, and I'm here to support the proposed comprehensive plan. I grew up in this town. I had an adult life away, and I returned to Ann Arbor and became a homeowner in 2022. One of the things I love most about Ann Arbor is its vibrant neighborhoods, places where people of different backgrounds, incomes, and lifestyles can live, work, and gather. Mixed-use housing makes that possible. It brings to life to our streets, supports local businesses, and makes it easier for people to live near the places where they frequent. I believe that people working in our hospitals, in our schools, in our local businesses should be able to have the opportunity to live in the town where they work and serve. I heard stories, when I previously worked as an administrator at Michigan Medicine, from folks who took, take on some of the hardest jobs in our community about the stresses of living farther away from the place where they work and being unable to find housing in this town. I think these folks deserve to feel supported in the ways that they have supported this community, especially in the past five years. This is an issue that has clearly become very contentious. I heard rumblings on both, on both sides of this issue as I've been standing here in line. I urge the council and the community members, both here tonight, online, and who might, might visit this, this issue here in the coming future, to really focus on solving for the, the bigger issue, which is that we need to create more housing units in this town, and we need to find ways to do that in, in ways that don't have, that don't have so much administrative fighting about it. I live in one of these neighborhoods with apartments and duplexes and single-family homes, and I've seen how that can work well. In my neighborhood, on my street, there's apartment buildings with many units. There are duplexes, there are triplexes. I, I live in a single-family home, and I have neighbors who, who have lived there for decades, and I, and I enjoy and appreciate the diversity that families coming through, or students, or working individuals bring to, to bring vibrancy to my neighborhood. This does not cause issues, but is rather an asset to how I see wanting to invest my next decades working and contributing to the tax base in this community. This plan will help create space for more housing to be available so that Ann Arbor can be a place where people can thrive for generations to come. I urge you to endorse the proposed comprehensive plan. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. My name's Tony Pennell. I live at 1328 Minerva Road, and I had the opportunity to speak here two weeks ago just on my own behalf. Tonight, I'm here to speak on behalf of, to read, actually, a letter from someone who grew up here in Ann Arbor, has moved away, but I think every one of us in this room knows him, and knows him quite well in his work. It's Ken Burns, the historian and filmmaker. Ken Burns' house is just across the street from us at the very end of Wellington Court, which you can see from Minerva Road there. I can throw a baseball onto his porch. Anyway, Ken wrote to us yesterday, this is actually addressed to you, and I'll be sending you this email as soon as, this evening. Word has reached me that the Planning Commission in Ann Arbor has prepared a draft comprehensive land use plan that many residents fear will alter the city's college-town landscape too radically. I've read that while smart, high-density development is welcome at many locations, the plan's broad-stroke approach exposes much of old Ann Arbor to tear-down and high-rise building catering only to wealthy buyers and high-end renters. I grew up in Ann Arbor in a small, modest wooden house that's still there in Burns Park at the bottom end of Wellington Court, a little back alleyway off of Cambridge. I went to Burns Park Elementary, Tappan Junior High School, and Pioneer. I graduated in 1971. I walk down Minerva Road, Olivia, and South Forest every day. It delights me that schoolchildren of Burns Park, who perhaps watched some of my work, may actually pass by my house and maybe, just maybe, be inspired. Creativity is born from knowing and curating our past while exploring and embracing the future. Ann Arbor has traditionally enjoyed a strong sense of the past, mixed with innovative, cutting-edge thinking. My hope is that the town can find a healthy, productive balance to modernize intelligently and ergonomically, but also to retain, nourish, and rejuvenate its storied history and architecture. That moderation and balance will keep your sense of place strong. Sincerely, Ken Burns, March 31, 2025.
Thank you.
Hi. My name is Tom Reed at 225 Marie Ave, and I did not think I had to follow Ken Burns tonight. So I'm here to support the comprehensive plan because, frankly, it's long overdue. We Ann Arborites, we love to call ourselves progressive, yet we make it nearly impossible to live here unless you have already owned a home or you make, you know, a six-figure salary. Mixed-use housing, density, walkability, like, these aren't radical concepts. This is how every major city just functions when they actually let people live near where they need to go. I fear that if we preemptively say no to every proposal that could add housing or make our neighborhoods more dynamic, we're just ensuring an Ann Arbor that becomes boring and just an enclave for the wealthy. I'd rather live in a city that welcomes people of all incomes, of all backgrounds, not one that's stuck in the past protecting parking spots like they're an endangered species. It's time to move forward. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Rob Russell. I live at 2004 Creston Street. Let me preface my comments by echoing a lot of people tonight. I absolutely support increasing density and walkability in Ann Arbor. I, I think, I would hope affordability goes without saying. Earlier, I learned of an article by Councilwoman Dish defending the comprehensive plan, perhaps explaining it, and I can see where she's trying to convince us to put down our pitchforks and torches. I assume that her views are, in general, shared across the commission. I still don't agree with her conclusions, and I would like to address some of those points right now. First, the, the comprehensive plan is not a zoning ordinance. No, of course it is not. It's, we've been reminded of this many times, but it is as close to actual ordinance as we are going to get at this stage, and it contains suggestions, which I've been told are by and large adopted just as recommended. In fact, the entire point of the City Council asking the Planning Commission for a plan is to generate something detailed enough to write ordinances. What we see is very likely what we'll get. The article included references to articles that suggest the plan could end single-family zoning, or embraces profit-driven development, or will sacrifice the city's tree canopy, and the dismissive response was, "These are fear-inducing messages." I actually wholeheartedly agree with that statement because this plan alarms me to no end. I believe that is also echoed by hundreds of maybe different people who have learned about it without ever reading these articles. Alarm is, in my opinion, the proper response. She notes that rental costs in Ann Arbor are steadily higher than the state average. I think we know that, and climbing. Coincidentally, the city, the university's enrollment has grown by 20 to 30% with the corresponding demand for student rentals. I hold that allowing for more student rentals will not help lower costs in any way. In fact, human greed tells me it will be the opposite. Moreover, time and again, the university has demonstrated it is an entity unto itself. It demands much from the city with questionable returns. Let the university count for its own students or pare back its numbers. We do not need to create any more cash-grab opportunities for investment bankers to accommodate this ravenous beast. Finally, the author advises not to equate density with affordability. She says the most effective way to create affordability is to build it steadily over time, and maybe I'm misunderstanding the plan, but spontaneously poofing our residential areas into a form-based, unrestricted unit free-for-all is the opposite of steadily over time. Even the successful Minneapolis study, she quotes, started pre-pandemic and extends in controlled stages through 2040. So I hope the vigor with which your community is reacting to this plan will give you all pause. You say you welcome our feedback. I expect you all to show that, show us that that includes not just sitting and listening to it, but also incorporating it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Welcome.
Good evening. My name is Yurka Hayush, and I live in the 1st Ward. First of all, I want to thank you for your dedication and hard work, despite the predictable onslaught of misinformation and downright nastiness that has unfortunately become an all-too-common feature of political discourse in the past few years. I strongly believe that the comprehensive plan should make it crystal clear that we, as a community, are rejecting the failed experiment of 1950-style suburbia and the disastrous legacy of exclusionary zoning and car-centric development. I also hope that the comp plan can include a bit of historical context. In 1920, Ann Arbor had 20,000 residents, and the university had a little over 10,000 students. Residential, commercial, and industrial uses all coexisted in a compact layout around the downtown core with two, three, four, yes, even seven-story buildings. There were electric streetcars and interurban rail going all the way to Jackson and downtown Detroit. You may be wondering how many zoning laws were on the books at this time. Zero. Today, we have six times the population, but we are sprawled out over 10 times the land area. The vast majority of our beloved historic buildings are illegal under the current zoning laws. What happened? Driven by racism and greed, farms and forests were replaced with bland, mass-produced tract houses and strip malls, chemically-treated monoculture lawns, and swathes of deadly roads. Our current land use patterns are not the result of organic evolution centered on the needs of residents. They are the direct result of a radical policy shift to prioritize SUVs and McMansions over people. The comp plan should make it unequivocally clear that the vast majority of negative impacts on urban environments are caused by excessive car use. Traffic violence, congestion, car storage, noise, and pollution are the real underlying problems, not people or buildings. If we can repeal the failed experiment of exclusionary zoning and return to historical development patterns, we can easily welcome tens of thousands of new residents while improving quality of life for everyone. If we can reduce the levels of private car use, virtually every other aspect of cities improves with increased density, whether it's economic vitality, cultural amenities, environmental sustainability, feasibility of high-quality public transit, or the per-capita cost of providing utilities and services. In conclusion, please do not water down the ambitions of our city to become a national leader in progressive land use policy. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. My name's Megan, and I live on Fair Street in the 5th Ward. I'm a registered nurse at U of M, and I just believe there needs to be more housing in general for everyone here in the city and more affordable housing. I was definitely priced out of my last place, like, almost $1,900 per month. I can't afford that with my, like, professional job. Many of my coworkers can't afford to live here, and they definitely can't afford to have families here. So I think, like, Ken Burns talking about children walking to work, or not walking to work, sorry, like, walking to school or walking to the park, like, my coworkers, their kids will never be able to have that if it's still so expensive to live in this city. And don't, yeah, don't we want, like, our healthcare heroes and the people who work in this city also to live here, to, that, invest here? And I also wanted to say that renters are voters, too. I, and taxpayers, too, not just people who are homeowners here. So I support having more housing. Thank you.
Thank you. Hello.
Hi. My name is Krista Spalding. I live at 8257 Chamberlain Road in Dexter. I'm here in support of the Ann Arbor Community Land Trust program. I work for the Wasna Intermediate School District. This is my third year there as a teaching assistant in the deaf, hard-of-hearing preschool program. And as a, you know, critical worker with a low income, I'm pushing for housing, as I live paycheck to paycheck, and there's no affordable, affordable housing nearby. With that being said, my classroom is just a few minutes away from the proposed building site on South Wagner Road, which would be an amazing opportunity for me to live that close to work. I love working with children to help them experience the world in a safe and caring environment. I am currently in school at Eastern Michigan University, studying child development to get my bachelor's degree. And when school is out, I work for the Ann Arbor YMCA, carrying out some really special summer programs there for young people. I currently live at home with my parents, as I cannot afford to live close to work. Last year, working full-time year-round, I made close to $30,000. I work really hard and, and am proud to work in programs that help kids. As a child myself who needed teams of dedicated educators and a supportive family and community, without that, my life would have turned out much different. I now want to be the person helping children grow and move towards success, and this housing opportunity would be just right for me to land in a safe place to keep growing as an independent, young, professional adult. I want to give back, and I want to show kids that if they work hard, the world will see them and support them, too. I know if just the right person makes a connection with children, it makes a difference. That child was me. Ann Arbor, please don't let me down. I have a lot that I want to do for you, too. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. Hi. My name's Noah Kaisas. I live at 1304 Wells Street. I teach at the, at Michigan Law School, where I work on land use issues, so I wanted to share that perspective. First of all, the, the earlier point that the goals of increasing housing, increasing density, speak to all of the goals of the city, from affordability to racial equity to sustainability to traffic safety. That's absolutely supported by rigorous empirical research. So what I really wanted to focus on, instead of recapitulating all of that, is the, the question of low-density residential zones, because I see in today's notice, that's an area where we're currently trying to think this through as a city. So a few thoughts there. One, the fears of rapid change are not likely to be materialized, right? In the places that have done the most in this kind of setting, change is unbelievably gradual. So Houston, Texas, the poster child for sort of mass densification of single-family neighborhoods over a 15-year period in the fourth-biggest city in the country, 1,392 conversions of single-family homes to townhouse development. That's just nothing year-over-year over a city that size. We should not expect anything other than the most gradual change if we go big. They have a 75-foot minimum, zero-to-three-side setbacks, right? If we do that, we're going to get a few units a year. We just don't have to be worried there. Two, that list on that notice of, maybe we'll add this. Micromanagement is a killer, right? The market changes in ways we don't predict on the demand side, on the competitor side, and if you micromanage it, you get nothing. We see that in cities like Minneapolis, all over the place. Third, again, focusing specifically on single-family, lower-density neighborhoods. If the goals are about racial equity and racial integration, you can't exempt these neighborhoods from the responsibility and opportunity to change, right? So one study recently from Matthew Ressiger, looking at Boston, he finds that if you, looking just across borders where there's zoning change, single-family residential versus allowing some multifamily that's actually capable of being built, you increase the black population by, or number of black households by 3.5 percentage points, and Hispanic households by 5.5 percentage points, which in the Boston area, which is pretty darn white, is a huge amount. It's half the standard deviation of all segregation. They can get rid of, just with equalizing density across the Boston area, not even increasing it on average. But the point is, the key geography is single-family residential neighborhoods versus not, right? You can't do it just by looking at the other neighborhoods. I see I'm out of time, so I just want to say thank you again, and that I support the, the large thrust of the comprehensive plan fully.
Thank you. Hello.
I'm Tim Rhodes. I live at 448 South First Street in Ann Arbor, which is part of the Old West Side. My concern is that the proposal is going to ruin a historic district. Luckily, we established the Old West Side when a bunch of historic homes were torn down in the '70s, and if you drive down First Street, Second Street, Third Street, you can see the apartments that were taking over the neighborhood. And we luckily established historic districts and did a good job with that and preserved several historic districts in the city. I'd hate to see that just go away. And if you allow four or six stories in the Old West Side, it's going to change the character and ruin it from a historic perspective. The other question I have about the, the whole plan is, what is it you're trying to achieve in terms of density? We're, we're roughly a little over 4,000 people per square mile in, in the city right now with population. Do you want 6,000? Do you want 8,000? What is it that you're really trying to achieve? And where is the transportation plan that really works? Because we don't have a transportation plan that really works, and unfortunately... And we luckily established historic districts and did a good job with that and preserved several historic districts in the city. I'd hate to see that just go away. And if you allow four or six stories in the Old West Side, it's going to change the character and ruin it from a historic perspective. The other question I have about the whole plan is, what is it you're trying to achieve in terms of density? We're roughly a little over 4,000 people per square mile in the city right now with population. Do you want 6,000? Do you want 8,000? What is it that you're really trying to achieve? And where is the transportation plan that really works? Because we don't have a transportation plan that really works, and unfortunately, we have to recognize that in the present day, it still includes some cars. We're eliminating hundreds of parking spots downtown right now. And just an anecdotal story, I tried to get people from work to come down, "Let's go to a bar downtown for a little happy hour." They wouldn't do it. They wouldn't go downtown, there's no parking. The sort of making it so difficult to park, so difficult to come downtown, is going to hurt businesses, and some businesses are suffering already, and I don't want to get to the tipping point where we really have difficult problems. Do you want to go to Arbor Brewing? It's not downtown anymore. You have to go out in Jackson Road. And I think we're going to see more of that if we don't pay attention to mobility for all residents. Thank you very much for your work. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello?
Hello. My name is Kathy Griswold. Thank you for your service. I want to say that I grew up well below the poverty line. My father died when I was three, leaving my mother and two other children. But it wasn't a sad story because my father had built a house for us. And because we had that house, we had stability, and it must have had a mortgage, so it was paid off with insurance. So really, housing has been a defining criteria, whatever you want to call it, in my life. And three things that I have done. One is, I was an early investor in the Ann Arbor Community Land Trust. The Ann Arbor Community Land Trust is the best thing that's happened to Ann Arbor in terms of housing. We are actually doing it, and the program needs to be expanded and supported by the city. Number two, the university needs to build housing as their staff and student population increases. As a council member, I introduced a resolution that was passed for the university to build, what we called then workforce housing. I think the term now is attainable housing. That is in the 2050 plan. Things are happening. Lastly, I have shared my home with a professor or a professor's family for the last 12 years because of the critical need, especially for foreign professors who come over here for a short time. Okay, that's my background. However, why is there so much discussion about this plan? Why have we really separated people into two groups? Because of the process. And why is that a bad process? I carried this sign over the weekend, and people said fascism, fascism, Hitler's, you know, Mussolini. No, that's not fascism. That was a result of fascism. Madeleine Albright has written a book on fascism, talks about one-party rule with corporations, developers, the university, unions, and the media, all taking the same position. Sounds like Ann Arbor. The only exception is those pesty little students from the Michigan Daily forgot what their playbook was. So we heard that recently. So anyway, what I would say is, we need to stop the process. We need to reflect on our city government and listen to the students and the parents and the old people like me, and bring us together for a plan that provides housing, including ownership for everyone who wants it and rental housing for those who want to rent. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello?
Hello. My name is Marietta McGraw, and I have been living in Ann Arbor since 2006. I have been teaching at Ann Arbor Public Schools for the past 15 years. I have one daughter who is a student at Ann Arbor Public Schools, and as you can see, I'm invested in this community. I have been renting for many years now. I want to buy a home here. But the increase in prices in the housing market, the increase in property taxes, and the lower teacher, teaching salaries have made it difficult for me to do so unless something changes. I'm outpriced by, rough estimate, at least $100,000. If, let's say, I would like to purchase a $300,000 home with property taxes, insurance and all, this would cost me about 65% to 70% of my monthly take-home paycheck. I would like to see Ann Arbor that offers community members like me an equal access to homeownership through projects like the A-2COT Housing. Please consider my perspective when you make decisions about our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Hello. Thank you very much for letting me speak. I am Hunter Hammond, a student at the University of Michigan, and like many of my fellow students, I'm a renter at 824 Street in Ann Arbor, and I don't have a car on campus. I'm speaking today in support of allowing about abundant housing in Ann Arbor. I'm speaking today, and especially today, because, like the vast majority of my fellow students, I will be working this summer, and not in Ann Arbor, to comment at future public information sessions that are currently scheduled over the summer. I speak with the voice of my 50,000 undergraduate peers who rent in Ann Arbor, and these voices, I believe, are important in these planning discussions, because as many have commented today, Ann Arbor would not be Ann Arbor without the University of Michigan and its students. In preparation for this meeting today, I've read many concerns regarding student housing taking over single-family homes in Ann Arbor. I agree, if I were an elderly resident in Ann Arbor and the homes around me were taken up by loud-partying students, I would be very annoyed and fearful. And for this reason, I support additional housing being allowed in Ann Arbor. As a student in Ann Arbor, I've had to move every single year due to extreme rent increases. In fact, just last year, my rent was increased $1,000 despite water damage and flooding in my apartment. While I lived close to campus my first year, as my rent has gone up, I've had to go further and further from campus to afford rent. This has pushed me closer and closer to local Ann Arbor residents and families. And while I don't have a great solution to stop backyard partying from students, I can tell you, like many of my fellow students, I would love if I could afford to live closer to campus. By going further than the comprehensive plan proposes and allowing missing-middle housing through four-story buildings by right, pre-approved building plans, or less restrictions on ADUs, I hope that there will be more supply, and I and my fellow students will be able to live in Ann Arbor in quality housing near campus that we can afford. Thank you very much for all of you for listening to me today.
Thank you.
Hello?
Hi, I'm Levi Barnes, a student in urban technology at the University of Michigan's Taubman College. I've come to appreciate and love the unique city of Ann Arbor because both its ability to have unique and quaint neighborhoods while having the colleges that comes with having a university like that of University of Michigan. The institution employs about 23,000 people for the core university and another 20,000 for the amazing hospitals where the university provides stellar care and produces stellar research. These employees range from highly-regarded, world-class professors to hard-working custodial staff, to underpaid GSIs, to amazing food staff and hard-working healthcare heroes like one of our previous commentators. Many of these employees have been priced out of Ann Arbor by the ridiculous prices that occur in the campus center and around Ann Arbor. It is very important to keep the unique community that comes with a walkable neighborhood with caring friends and compassionate neighbors. It is equally important for the city to allow for these neighborhoods to evolve while also allowing for the expansion of affordable housing supply for the working class who helps run Ann Arbor. I speak in support for high-density and sustainable housing around Ann Arbor.
Thank you.
Hello?
Good evening, commissioners and staff. Kirk Westfall, 3505 Charter Place, Board Two. What I really appreciate about Planning Commission in my own time serving on it is the insulation from politics. While you listen to public feedback, being appointed allows you to look at best practices, make recommendations according to your own interpretation of the research and historical and physical context before your recommendations meet a political body. Recently, I've appreciated how you rejected the simplistic framing of density that was put forward in early consultant exercises, like when you saw how people were given a false choice among ADUs, triplexes, and quadplexes, and they said none of the above and advocated for form instead of unit counts, you made sure that was part of the plan. Another example, you push back against the repeated assertions that 35 feet was the community consensus when the comp plan subcommittee and some members of the public had a consensus around 48 feet, knowing that there are tools to mitigate height that could be tacked on later if desired. So while my comment tonight was supposed to stop there and be a simple statement of support for what you're doing, and I do support it, it seems we're needing to respond to yet another round of questionable suggestions. I'm referring to the agenda item that got posted this morning that asked you to limit the height, no matter how far it is from anyone, to three stories, and also to send planning staff on what I can only imagine will turn into a year-long research project that none of you asked for. I am disappointed to see this resolution even get floated to you. To me, it's going against several things. It goes against what the consultant said a few months ago, that heights shouldn't be in the plan. If you did decide to put heights into the plan, the resolution goes against your subcommittee consensus on height. It appears to inject politics into the Planning Commission proceedings. It bizarrely proposes distinctly non-form-based criteria, like bedrooms and units and claims that are form-based. And lastly, and most concerning, it reveals an expectation from somewhere that the low-rise district will be subsequently broken into multiple subzoning districts with restrictions that respond to neighborhood fabric. I hope that you just not just reject this resolution, but clearly reaffirm that there should be no language in the plan that recommends a regression back into our current failed experiment with Euclidean zoning and devolves into complex zoning schemes. This would be inviting an additional multi-year process that would do nothing but create division, inequities, and further delay zoning reform. Housing delayed is housing denied. Please continue your work on a nation-leading plan. Thanks for your hard work.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Adam McHugh. I live at 618 South Main Street, and I wanted to speak here today as a disabled person in opposition to single-family zoning and car-based infrastructure and in support of the comprehensive plan. I have something called psoriatic arthritis. For those of you who know about rheumatoid arthritis, it's similar. Instead of attacking my joints, it mostly attacks my tendons. This can make repetitive motions painful or impossible or not a smart thing to do, and that includes driving. Luckily, I have pretty stable healthcare, a good job, and I was able to get better, and now I can live independently, thankfully. And the reason I came to Ann Arbor is to seek the micro-mobility infrastructure that allows me to get around without a car, as well as live in the density allows me to reach medical services, groceries, et cetera, without a car. But unfortunately, not everyone is so lucky as me, and not everyone can afford a car. And unfortunately, most places in the United States these days require cars to get around. There are people beyond the obvious disabilities of people not being able to walk well or having paralysis. Some people don't have good enough eyesight to be able to hold a driver's license. There's neurological disorders, or people have seizures, they can't drive. And other disabilities that our current system of zoning traps people in their homes. Cars can be expensive. I think all-in prices these days are about like $700 a month for a used car, $1,000 or more for a new car. And I think it's disgusting that our society requires cars to participate in most areas. And unfortunately, disabled people and people with chronic illnesses are those most likely to be in poverty or low income, and those of us who struggle most to afford cars. So again, I wanted to show my support in the comprehensive plan, the effort to densify, bring services closer to people and where they live, make our city more walkable and a better place for micro-mobilitys such as bikes, scooters, and just walking, et cetera. And really push to allow disabled people to participate more easily in our society, lower the cost of living, and give people more independence. This issue, it hits home for me personally. If I wasn't so lucky, or had such good health coverage, or had such an amazing set of friends and family, I could have easily been one of those people who have the mobility restricted by our existing zoning policies, and that shouldn't happen to anybody. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Hank Barry. I find myself in agreement with Kirk Westfall, which serves surprising. I think we're heading down a path where we're going to have years of dispute over this comprehensive plan, and I think it's all around process. The flaw here is not substance, it's process. So let me make a couple of process points, and then I have a suggestion. First of all, I think that we should all acknowledge that the community engagement that went on up until now is pretty flawed. The slides that were shown, the pitch that was made, were for 35-foot limitation and a 1 to 4 units. That's out the window now, as far as I understand, and that's going to result in a lot of controversy over time, because those people are going to feel correctly, I think, that they were not spoken to honestly. If this was hanging around, this idea of getting rid of any limitations on units, any limitation on height, if it was hanging around at that time, then if I'm that person, I'm feeling that that was misrepresented to me. And I think it's a basis for a challenge to this down the road. Secondly, Chairman Lee, I really, I appreciate your efforts on behalf of your chairmanship, but I have to say that I really believe that you should recuse yourself. You describe yourself on LinkedIn as your current position being with the Song Family Office, Managing Director of Real Estate for the Song Family Office, responsible for the creation of a real estate venture arm of the family office, responsible for real estate strategic planning, et cetera. Your immediately previous position was with the Chief Real Estate Officer for Oxford Properties. So your background, your interests, and commitments are to real estate developers and development. There's nothing wrong with that. As Chair of the Planning Commission, you're in a position where you have to be a fair and impartial advocate for all the people in the city. I would ask you to take a look at Section 5 of the bylaws of the Planning Commission, which are separate from the bylaws of the city, and I think it's pretty clear that where you have a direct financial interest, you need to recuse yourself. Let me make one suggestion. In a Facebook thread the other night, Lynn Song offered a suggestion. She said, "I've repeatedly said that if corruption is actually occurring at the local level, then we should bring this to the state AG. Get the investigations going. I'm ready." I think we should consider taking this process to the state AG for the following reasons: the ones I just mentioned, those process reasons, and there are hundreds of others I haven't gone into here. But one thing we can do is to get an opinion from the state that this process has followed the laws of the state of Michigan. I personally don't believe it has, but we can absolutely get an advisory opinion from the Attorney General. She's available. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello?
Hi, I'm Jordan Karaskio. I live at 517 Glendale. This is actually my first council meeting. And we moved to Ann Arbor. I have two young children. We're a mixed-race family. We came to Ann Arbor for its diversity. We live on the north side of Eberwhite because we enjoy that it's a mixed apartments and duplexes, and there's some walkable items, so I am pro-higher-density. However, I think about like Atlanta and how they have very, very open types of planning. And so I guess my request to you all as you're making decisions is, you know, like where my children play. And, you know, a lot of people have talked to about how there's a lot of older people here who are in defense of not, you know, not opening the zoning, but that's because all the parents are at home with their children. They can't be here. And so I think it's really unfair to say that, like, someone who's not in that sect doesn't feel that way. And so my request to you would be just that, like, in my home, if someone can build a four-story building next to me, maybe on the south side, maybe blocking all the sun, it's like the whole reason of coming here and not going to New York City or something like that has been, like, removed. And we get to live by a couple of trees and things like that. So I just, my hope would be that whatever is decided, that there would be some thought and moderation about, like, why people are coming to Ann Arbor in the first place and not a different, super-high-density city. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Ralph McKay. I live at Red Oak and Vesper in the Fifth Ward. The speaker, a couple of speakers ago, said most of what I would agree with about the process, and I really want to focus on that to start. And I don't know when it happened, but obviously, there was a disconnect at some point between the views of many of you based on the comments that I've seen you make about the 48-feet height limit and unlimited units and so on, and what was done in the public presentations. And...
four-story building next to me, maybe on the south side, maybe blocking all the sun, it's like the whole reason of coming here and not going to New York City or something like that has been like removed. And we get to live by a couple of trees and things like that. So I just, my hope would be that whatever is decided, that there would be some thought and moderation about like why people are coming to Ann Arbor in the first place and not a different, super-high-density city. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Ralph McKay. I live at Red Oak and Vesper in the 5th Ward. The speaker, a couple of speakers ago, said most of what I would agree with about the process, and I really want to focus on that to start. And I don't know when it happened, but obviously there was a disconnect at some point between the views of many of you based on the comments that I've seen you make about the 48-feet height limit and unlimited units and so on, and what was done in the public presentations. And at that point, whenever anybody heard that, the first couple of comments, the immediate point should have been, "Stop, pause, change the public presentation." And that didn't happen. I'm not, I don't know how or who was in charge of that, but at that point, that should have been a clear message, pause it, get the public presentation fixed, and then you wouldn't have about half of the outrage that you saw at your last meeting, because people would have known where you were coming from and figured, "Okay, we disagree, we'll express that, but we won't feel like it was bait and switch." So I don't know where you go from here, because I think it should be paused and practically done over from scratch. And I know that will drive everybody in this room crazy, because it will slow the whole process down. But you know, this is what happens when you rush and you don't do it right the first time, and you try to just push it through. That's the controversy you get. The second point that I want to make is that the assumption that's being made by many of the speakers and by many, many of you and city council is that you have an automatic enhancement of affordability if you build like crazy. And I think even the studies, I've read the same studies that you've all seen, and Ms. Dish has quoted, I've read them too. You're not going to get that effect at the beginning. What you're going to get is the opposite. You're going to get, I wrote this up during the A200 discussion several years ago. You take one of the few remaining affordable houses, $350,000, $400,000, you knock it down, and the units after you pay that price and then build, those units are going to be $550,000, $650,000, $700,000, maybe more. And so, okay, does that result, maybe 15, 20, 25 years down the road, you have increased affordability, but you're going backwards if you don't. That's just how it's going to be. The last little point within my remaining seconds is that we need to focus on other things, too. For example, mixed use along East Stadium and Packard and so on. Is that change going to allow STRs throughout that whole area? There's a whole host of other questions that obviously I haven't heard anybody else address here. We'd like to see the draft plan, so we can actually look to see what you have for that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Tom Ewing. I hope to maybe enlighten some people on what are obvious facts to me, so I'll give a little bit more of my background. In the late 90s, I helped start a charity that raised money for affordable housing. We raised the first $60,000 of seed money for the Carrot Way. I served on the Board of Directors there for over eight years. I am also a real estate broker, a licensed builder, and a landlord. I've served on the Board of Washtenaw Area Apartment Association. For those people here who think any buildings built in Ann Arbor anytime in the near future, unless they are Empire State Buildings, are going to lower the rents or even stabilize the rents, they're in la-la land. I'll give you two very simple things that everybody can see. The new dormitories that the university is building in the old Fingerley area, those will mostly house freshmen, new freshmen. And freshmen leave the dorms and go where? They go to private housing, because they want a little more privacy, okay? Secondly, Ann Arbor is a victim of its own success. It keeps coming up on everybody's 10 best places to live, five best places to live, best place in the country, highest computers, et cetera, et cetera. People want to move here, and they move here in the thousands every year. If you stop those two things, you'll make a big push on maybe slowing down the rent increases, okay? So, you know, I love affordable housing. I'd love to have everybody have affordable housing, but I'm sorry, it's not there. In 2020, the voters finally passed a millage to help with affordable housing, and we finally started to get some. In the 10 years prior to that, the city's income went from $83 million to over $500 million. How many big affordable housing buildings do they put up? Okay? If you want to convince the city to instantly increase density in affordable housing, have them eliminate the arbitrary code requirement that says only six people can live, only six unrelated people can live in any house. Doesn't matter if it's eight bedrooms, 10 bedrooms, whatever. If they do this, the rents will probably go up a little bit, but the cost per person will go down. I don't know where they got this arbitrary number, but I know that society has not gone to hell in a handbasket, because fraternities and sororities are here. They've worked out okay, and certainly you can have more than six people in a house. The city is about to pass an ordinance called the Green Rental Housing Initiative.
We're at time, sir.
It will increase your rents.
Thank you so much. I appreciate you. Hello, and welcome.
Hello, thank you. I'm happy to be here again, and I'm learning more and more as I come back. So I am Stacy Har. I am a renter and homeowner in Ann Arbor for the last 30 years, so 30-plus years. I currently, can you hear me? Sorry. I currently reside at 2004 Cressland in the Patton-Gill neighborhood, Ward 3. I appreciate the effort that you've had to share ideas on the upcoming comprehensive plan to the population. What I've read, though, is that you've received input from 3,000 to 4,000 people, which sounds like an impressive number, but actually it's less than 4% of our population. And it appears that many, many more of us have recently become aware of the potential impact of the plan. These issues have been discussed probably even far longer than when I've been attending the meetings, but there's issues such as water runoff, flooding, solar access, tree preservation, the infrastructure, parking issues, increased crime and safety concerns, and all of these have yet to be addressed in the discussions that I've been reading about and hearing about. I have also read the comprehensive plan low-density rise memo, and I'm concerned that the limits are not really defined. It seems like there's a lot of room for variation. Furthermore, I have been told that zoning is the bottom line, and that if a developer can develop whatever they want, as long as it fits within the zone. So if you make everything a mixed-use zone, then it's a free-for-all. What will be developed? More student housing, whatever the developer can get the most money out of. That is very, very different from multifamily housing, which I'm hearing a lot of people in this room would like to see. They would like to live here, they would like to have a family here, they would like to buy something. But what is being proposed doesn't guarantee that they're going to do that. Data does not suggest that family home prices or rents will be lower anyway, and how absolutely tragic would it be if we destroy our neighborhoods and our city, create parking and flooding problems, numerous other problems, and people still won't be able to buy a house and have a place for their family to live that's affordable? Only the developers and landlords win. I know that means several people on the commission, but I truly hope that you can all see beyond your own gains. I urge you, urge you, please, to slow down and involve the neighborhoods more directly in this plan. Thank you very much for your time and attention. Thank you.
Hello. My name's Gaia Kyle. I live at 522 Miller in Ann Arbor. I'm going to refer a little bit to the person who spoke to in front of me who talked about this six-person limits, which I think are in the higher number R zoning. In the R1 and R2, it's limited to four people. I'm a family man. I raised my family here in Ann Arbor, and the first few years of my family's life, we were living with a bunch of other people in a house. And that kind of living situation, that cooperative living situation, I've seen work really well for people time and again, and it's an opportunity for social interaction and growth and all kinds of things. And the limit on the number of people in R1, R2 zoning, and then the higher numbers, curtails the opportunity for that kind of housing. There is a Byzantine exception for monks, I think. But if you want to make that exception, make it for families of choice, whoever they want to be. You know, there doesn't really need to be any limit, though, because the building code says how many people can fit in a room of what size, and what the size of the rooms and the bathrooms and so on have to be, and that's a natural limit. That said, I've done a little looking around, and recently a number of cities have been changing their numbers upward. I think Boulder, Colorado, did this, and I talked to some of the folks from the city there, and they've said things have gone really well with that. I know that Grand Rapids here in Michigan also recently made such changes. And so, you know, I really want to encourage you all to think about making a change towards, you know, a building code-only kind of provision for how many people, and not this discrimination against whether someone's in a family or in a circle of friends. When I share this idea with people, it gets well-received. I've talked to people on the Planning Commission who've said that, and also on city council and also in the community, so I really hope that you'll take a look at that provision as you work on the changing of zonings. Thank you much.
Thank you.
I am a 76-year-old property owner who happens to have been a real estate journalist for
Name and address.
Gary Hoffman, 1546 Marlborough.
Thank you.
Who happens to have worked in the newspaper business, covering real estate for much of my 40-year career as a reporter. What I saw again and again is that when sometimes blanket proposals are made that ostensibly apply to an entire city, certain neighborhoods are going to be more amenable to the type of investment that might involve, say, a four- or six-story apartment building built on, say, two residential lots, and others won't be. I don't think, I think on Marlborough Street, we might see a possibility, or within a few blocks, of an apartment building going up under these plans on perhaps a double lot. I think as we go forward, we need to take special care of the neighborhoods as these projects are planned and executed. And by that, I mean, I think there needs to be public hearings on every project. I think there needs to be parking for the residents on the property, not to exclude parking on the street, but we need to, they need to pay their fair share in terms of the accessibility of parking. They need to provide that. And I also think that we need to keep in mind that what's driving this is, in part, is the constantly growing number of students at U of M, the constantly, the appetite, the university's appetite for land, which drives down property values, in some cases, or drives up property values, in some cases, takes away tax base. And these neighborhoods, I think, can be preserved and maintain their character with a lot of attention to how these buildings are designed and how they're implemented in the neighborhoods. For instance, I don't think there'll be very many going up in Arbor Hills. I don't think there'll be many going in the Wells Park area. It'll be the neighborhoods with the most affordable housing, sometimes the oldest housing, like our neighborhood, that will be most likely targeted, in my opinion, and I've seen it many times. A real estate investor told me once that his house in Birmingham was worth more torn down than selling it, and that could be true of a lot of our homes in our area. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Good evening. My name's Richard Docus. I live at 1243 Marlborough. And on my way here tonight, I had to make a little detour, because it turns out Page, which is newly paved city street, is all being torn up, because we have about a 12-inch pipe that has ruptured, and it's a whole section being removed. And what I'd like to see, and I have yet to see, I've looked all over for it on the city's website, I'd like to see the report of the infrastructure and how it's going to be handled, and can it be handling increased density in our neighborhoods like mine? So, for example, well, how's the sewer department going to handle this, and how about these 85-year-old sewer pipes that we have in our neighborhood, in the water pipes and the gas lines? I'd like to see that. Are they available that we can look at, so we can be assured that we're going to not be able to turn on the lights and flush our toilets? I don't know. I've never seen these reports. Are they around? I didn't think so. So I really think that that would be a really nice thing to put online, so we can see the studies of how the increased density in our neighborhoods are going to work. Speaking of our neighborhoods, the fellow right in front of me kind of took a little bit of my things that I wanted to say. I really believe this is not going to be equitably spread out through the city. It's really going to come down to money. That's really what it boils down to. And what you're really going to lose in this will be the most affordable homes in the city. That's actually what's going to be lost here, because they're simply going to be bought up by speculators, and the end results will be homes, not homes, unless, of course, you guys get behind this program, which I highly recommend, because these homes would fit into our neighborhood. And the biggest important aspect of this is equity. These people living in here will, in fact, have equity and homeownership, and they will fit into our neighborhoods. So I really think that that would be a very good idea. And I honestly think that you probably should slow down a little bit and think about it. You haven't addressed anything about, what are you going to do about shading solar panels? I have no idea. I've not seen anything about that in your plan. How are you going to keep people like me who have invested in solar panels from simply not being able to use them? There's nothing in your plan about that.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Scott Trudell. I live at 526 North Main Street. I didn't think I was going to make it tonight, so I didn't have time to prepare remarks, but I have a few notes. I think the specific resolution on the agenda tonight for the low-rise residential, addressing the plan, is making two mistakes. The first mistake it's making is it's getting too specific. The comprehensive plan's role isn't to specify every last detail about what's supposed to happen everywhere in the city. It's supposed to set a direction that then we use when we're making the laws of the zoning ordinance. And I think talking about things like heights and unit density is just too specific to have in the comprehensive plan, and we should be sticking to broader notions of the shape and form of what the different zoning district characteristics look like. I also think the other mistake it makes is we're making the same mistakes that we made that got us into this mess by making things hard to build at all and hard to change at all. If we're keeping the height limit effectively the same, if we're sticking to things like the number of unrelated individuals who can live in a home the same, then the unit density the same, or just very minor increment, then nothing's going to change. We're going to get more expensive housing, but not very much more housing. And that gets us to the, you know, commenters have pointed out, new construction housing is expensive, just like a new car is expensive, but we don't get affordable transportation by mandating Ford build $5,000 cars. You know, you buy an old car, you get around a different way. You buy a bike, you get on the bus. You get an apartment instead of a single-family house on a half an acre, and that's okay. And cities change and adapt to what our needs are, and part of the reason we're in the mess we're in now is 20, 30 years ago, we stopped allowing new construction to happen and new infill to happen in most of the city. We down-zoned huge portions of the city. We locked a lot of things in place. We made, like my neighborhood, 80% plus of the parcels are non-conforming, so you literally can't change anything. And that is, you know, not a sustainable option going forward. You know, the best time to plant a tree was 20 years ago, the next best time is today. Same thing with building homes. I live in a neighborhood with a lot of variety of built environment and I welcome the change. You know, cities change, they need to change. We need to make room for more people. Don't make things too specific, don't, like, there's a lot of fear here. A lot of the fear is based in ignorance of what the plan should be addressing and not addressing, what the unknown questions are that we will need to address as a community as we define the zoning ordinances and figure out what the actual laws are going to look like. But don't get too far into the weeds with the plan, please. Thanks.
Thank you.
Hello.
Hi. I'm Ryan Braze. I live at 1019 Lincoln between Cambridge and Wells in Ward 3. I'm a member of the North Burns Park Neighborhood Association, but like everyone in our group, I don't speak for the whole association. I also don't speak for the 45% of North Burns Park residents who are renters but not invited to our Neighborhood Association meetings. I'm here to support greater housing density in all of Ann Arbor, including in my neighborhood. Our block has single-family homes, duplexes, and a quad. It's a great place for our school-aged children. A block north of my house on Lincoln, we recently gained a new pair of duplexes, bringing 16 bedrooms to what was a small, single-family home on a medium-sized lot. I look forward to more neighbors and more density and I trust the city planners and council to effectively grow our housing as reflected in the comprehensive plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Hello.
Hello. My name is Eleanor Jones. I am at 1319 Olivia. I'm a lifelong Ann Arborite and third-generation Burns Park resident. For the past 31 years, my husband and I have owned and cared for a 1920 home on the same street that I grew up on, Olivia Avenue, just blocks from the Brooklyn home that my grandparents bought in 1949 where my mother was raised. I'm going to try to summarize because I think a lot of people have said things that I was going to say, but things I want to make sure, points I want to make sure to make is that we need to consider maintaining the characters of these neighborhoods that may be affected by infill. We need to look at setbacks. We need to preserve the tree canopy. We need to look at our very old infrastructure that has flooded by basement with raw sewage twice. We need to look at electrical supply. What about all the EVs that people are going to want to charge? And also noise and light pollution that will come with greater density. The joys of walking down a quiet, tree-lined street could be very much threatened by too much density. It could be wisely done, though. So I want to encourage the consideration of preserving green spaces, the tree canopy, not just on public land, but on private land. The, I'm sorry, planning for the additional traffic. Where will additional cars be parked? What about EV charging stations that they're going to need? And I think all these issues, although you cannot spell out too many specifics in the plan, you could make statements such as, you know, every attempt will be made to preserve the character of each given neighborhood and take stances like that. I also beg you to slow down the process to allow broader public input. I strongly urge the city to take the time to do a statistically valid survey of residents' opinions to inform this process. The results should be shared publicly to all residents via direct means such as paper mail, postcards, as someone mentioned. As well as making the data that supports this proposed zoning publicly available. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, everyone. My name is Alex Kim. I'm a undergraduate student at the university and I am renting in the downtown area. I wasn't planning on talking, but then I thought there's a lot of interesting stuff, so I want to put my two cents out here. Anyways, I, currently where I live is, I've been shoehorned into an expensive apartment where I pay $100 for a view and among a bunch of other unnecessary things. And it's like, first off, that kind of sucks. But anyways, what I'm getting at is that, you know, living in Ann Arbor for me is a privilege. If I didn't have the, you know, the financial support that I did, I would not have the opportunity to engage with the university and with the city and community as a whole without what I have. And I'm very grateful for that. That being said, because it's such a privilege for me, there are, I understand that there are many other people who are equally or even more like capable and talented than I am, who are effectively barred from the city, not because they can't like make, not because like they didn't earn their way in, but because they can't afford it. Because in the current renting situation, there are housing leasing contracts that turn every roommate into a $20,000 liability, speaking from like personal experience. And so, you know, when I think about, I guess, like zoning reform and I, like changing the status quo from where it is, I think that adding missing middle housing could greatly benefit the city by allowing great people to have a chance in the city to potentially contribute something of their own. And at the same time, I do understand and I, like, I understand, I guess, the worry that by, by approving like all of these like changes, we're going to risk compromising the, like, the, like, the character of like the neighborhoods here and like the character of our city. That being said, I feel like the legacy of this, if we spend so much like time and so much effort preserving the legacy of Ann Arbor as it is, we may end up risking preventing the city from reaching even better heights than where it is right now. So, I don't know, that's, that's just a hot thought I had. That's it.
Thank you.
Hello. My name is Chris. I live at 2018 Runnymede Boulevard. Honestly, I'm a little embarrassed to speak tonight because I'm not nearly as smart as everyone here. I don't have any fancy facts or figures. I'm kind of a dumb-dumb. If you were to ask my girlfriend, she would agree very quickly. My only real note is I just want to caution the commission, caution the commission to not really think of me just as any one thing. I mean, I certainly don't think of myself as just like a homeowner or, you know, as an old person. I mean, I don't feel old. I mean, when I wake up in the morning, my left knee does hurt a little bit, but I still feel pretty young most times. But really, I just want to say, I might hold one of the most rare and controversial opinions here. I'm undecided. I'm truly undecided. I feel like no one here is kind of in that camp, like everyone is really pretty entrenched. But I really, again, just want to caution you guys to treat me like a nuanced person, someone who, you know, who lives a life that, sometimes I change my mind before I finish a sentence and it's come out of my mouth. So the point I really want to make, and then I'll leave you guys because I don't want to ramble, is I just kind of want to urge some form of moderation in the plan because I tend to think that wild swings one way or the other kind of leave us open to rubber band effect where we then swing wildly back the other way and then you're left leaving about half the populace kind of unhappy. I mean, that's just, this is a quick example. I voted for the previous council, then they went a little cuckoo because they wanted us to be like fossilized in amber. So then I voted the other way the next time. I mean, I honestly really only have a goal, a personal goal, having myself and my neighbors and my community members finish each day about 1% happier than we all were the previous day. And that's a really hard goal to accomplish. I just think some form of moderation needs to be really thought about when it comes to voters like me. I mean, we have to grow, we have to move forward, we have to change. If you don't move and grow in life, then you're kind of left behind. So clearly, we have to grow and move forward, but I just kind of urge some form of, of moderation. Thank you.
Thank you. Hello.
Hi. Erin Kenny, 1039 Olivia. I'm in the Burns Park neighborhood. I wasn't going to make it tonight. I'm a single parent of two kids. I wasn't sure I was going to make it, but wanted to be here and I don't have anything prepared, so I apologize for that. But I wanted to echo a couple of things that were already said. It does seem like there's a lot of older residents that maybe complain about the, the plan and our single-family homeowners. I am one of those elderly residents that were mentioned earlier that has an issue with college kids and crime right near my home. So I wanted to kind of bring that up and the pressures that certain neighborhoods feel because of the plan. I've had multiple investors come to my home and ask me how much I'd be willing to sell it for because, as mentioned earlier, it's worth more as a tear-down now than it is as another family moving in. And I've lived in Ann Arbor for about 10 years. I also wanted to mention a point that somebody brought up earlier, that there aren't a lot of families here because they have kids. And I had to ask my 13-year-old son to watch my daughter to come here. So I think we see a lot of the same people because people are just catching on, on what this plan is, but there is a lot of concern with families, particularly in my neighborhood, that have young kids. And the last point is, I would caution you to please slow down. What is the rush? Why are we pushing this through so quickly? It was, I think there was a proposition today to speed up the plan. I don't get it. Why? I know we need housing. I want affordable housing. Our neighborhood is 35 to 40% rentals already and I welcome all the neighbors in those rental properties. But, you know, there was new property built that was mentioned earlier on Lincoln Avenue right by, by my home, $1,500 per bed. That's not affordable. I think we need to slow down, figure out how it impacts vulnerable neighborhoods right by the university, which is mine, and get more neighborhood involvement. Thank you. Thank you for the service.
Thank you.
Hi. My name is John Godfrey. I live at 2809 Brockman and I had no intention of speaking, but I just want to make a couple of quick comments. This is a train wreck that we all could see coming and I'm really sorry that we've gotten to this point. We, I think what we hear here today, tonight, is actually largely an agreement that cities change, evolve, and they must, and they must adapt to changing circumstances, and that we need new housing. There is a significant affordability crisis facing renters as well as new home buyers. It's not restricted to Ann Arbor, though. It is general across the United States. Most of the factors that are driving these increases are nationally and we can't constrain them. We have to acknowledge that to ourselves. We are losing people here who can't afford to live. We have faculty living the university because they can't afford to buy, to get a house here. At the same time, we coming together as a community with the exceptional capabilities we have, we have so many people who are experts in the experience of their own lives in addition to their professional background, who drawing together can begin to tackle this really complicated set of issues that we're all facing together and that unite us. Unfortunately, we have trolling. We have, we have, we have divisive language, use of loaded language. We have assertions and allegations about the motivations that trying to impugn others that is profoundly disrespectful and destructive of a local democracy. And I say that with the deepest part of conviction I can muster. We are better than what we have seen and we can do better. I think, I, I am truly oppressed by the Ann Arbor Community Land Trust and I think it's absolutely essential and long overdue. We need stronger tenants' unions. We need to find creative ways to change our local ordinances to prevent speculation from destroying the lives of renters, of making students move every single year just to be able to afford their rent. We are in a very desperate strait. The way to solve this is to bring our community together, to call on people themselves to collaborate with each other and to develop a workable plan that works for Ann Arbor and prepares for its future. The top-down approach that has been taken has been destructive. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, everyone. My name is Joe Zilka. I live at Woodbury Gardens, 1920 Woodbury Drive. I just wanted to bring, I'm a data analyst at the University of Michigan and I wanted to bring some data to the table. So per Burkadia, Burkadia is a real estate services firm, they looked at since 2019, the occupancy rate in the Ann Arbor, Michigan rental market. And they found that, I'll just read some percentages off to you, at any given time, Ann Arbor's occupancy rate is 97.8%, 96.9%, 98.7%, as low as 95.6% and now currently is at 96.7%, meaning that Ann Arbor's rental market is essentially full. And so it's not all that surprising when rents go up and up and up and up because demand to live here is, as many others have mentioned, this is a desirable place. I love living here. And demand to live here is very high. I think what, one thing that can, we talked a lot tonight about bringing the community together. I unfortunately was not here to vote for it, but I would have, but in 2020, we passed the Affordable Housing Millage. That is one mil of property taxes that will go to the construction of below-market rent housing. If we do not allow for more market-rate housing, not only will that further put, continue to put pressure on rents, on people continuing to rent like myself, we also won't get any affordable housing. Would you rather have one mil of a smaller number, a smaller tax base, especially as the university continues to expand, or one mil of a bigger number, as we've seen already with Dunbar Tower coming out of the ground right now in Carytown? That money can be leveraged, it can be sold, go to the bond market, it can go to, it can be paired with grants, and that can get affordable housing out of the ground here and now before things really continue to spiral out of control. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
Greetings. My name is Luis Vasquez. I live at 909 Barton Drive in the first ward, Upper Lower Town. I'm a 41-year resident of the city of Ann Arbor and I'm here in person tonight to thank you all for engaging in the comprehensive plan process. You've all put in a lot of hard work. Just wanted to express my appreciation to you for doing that and being part of that. And I feel as a citizen that I, I have been engaged by the city. I've attended numerous meetings. I feel that I'm fully informed about the process and I encourage you to continue to move forward. Build higher, build taller where we can, as much as we can. We are in the midst of a severe housing crisis in this city and across the nation, frankly. I want to especially express my thanks to Councilwoman Dish for putting in her newsletter, her most recent newsletter, the facts about the comprehensive process that, that you all have been engaging us in. And also, Councilperson Dharma Ackman also outlined and summarized all that's been going on with this process. So I would encourage my fellow citizens to take a look at those newsletters and read for yourself what, what these folks have been doing and, and how they've been engaging us. I've also read through the flyer, the five or six-page flyer, which got my baloney meter spiking, yeah, because it was so filled with misinformation, outright falsehoods and false narratives. And thank you for debunking that, Councilperson Dish and Councilperson Ackman. And, you know, I mean, it's, it's an anonymous flyer. There is nobody who had the guts to put their name on it and talk about respect and disrespect. When I first moved to Ann Arbor 41 years ago, I was a renter. After a few years, my wife and I were able to buy a house in that, the deed for that house. So I would encourage my fellow citizens to take a look at those newsletters and read for yourself what these folks have been doing and how they've been engaging us. I've also read through the flyer, the five- or six-page flyer, which got my baloney meter spiking, yeah, because it was so filled with misinformation, outright falsehoods and false narratives. And thank you for debunking that, Councilperson Dish and Councilperson Akman. And, you know, I mean, it's an anonymous flyer. There is nobody who had the guts to put their name on it and talk about respect and disrespect. When I first moved to Ann Arbor 41 years ago, I was a renter. After a few years, my wife and I were able to buy a house. In that, the deed for that house was a covenant, a restriction, that said it could only be sold to a Caucasian racial person. That needs to stop.
Thank you.
Hello.
Hello. Thank you for having me speak. I'm Barry Checkaway, a long-term resident of Ann Arbor and a former member of the Planning Commission. So I appreciate what you're doing, but I especially appreciate all the people who have come and given their ideas to this. It suggests that Ann Arbor is yearning for more participation than it's had in the past. I only have two brief comments about the present comprehensive planning process. With all due respect to our planning staff, who work very hard and are very earnest, the quality of community participation in the planning process has been very low-quality. That is, the criteria for the measure of quality of participation is not its scope, that is, the number of meetings that you have, the number of people who come to them, or the number of people who speak at them. Because you could have limitless people speaking, but if you don't do anything with what you hear, then community participation is very low-quality. Quality participation is when there is a thorough investigation of the situation at hand, and that the representative voices, the diverse voices of the community, are heard, and it has some influence on the end, on the decisions that take place. I see no evidence of that here. Most of the people I know, who are bright people and very aware, are not, have not, are not aware of this process. Second, community participation is also about the representation of diversity of interest on the Planning Commission. My understanding is that the Planning Commission has one member who has been chief real estate officer of the largest commercial real estate corporation in Ann Arbor, and who now manages real estate for a venture capitalist firm, capital firm, sorry. Four other planning commissioners have property interests in land development. Three commissioners are landlords with rental property in the city of Ann Arbor. There is a strong representation of for-profit people who stand to benefit financially from this process. They may not even know that they're going to benefit financially, but I bet that they do. I bet, I would just say, my simple response is, you need more community participation.
Thank you.
Good evening, Planning Commission. My name is Sarah Ellen Strongman. I live at 1534 Woodland Drive here in Ann Arbor, and I'm faculty in the Department of Afro-American and African Studies at the University of Michigan. Longtime listener, first-time in-person caller. At the last planning meeting, which I watched online, multiple people compared the comprehensive plan to Project 2025. Now, I must admit to being confused by this, but as I tell my students in my classes, I did some research. So I went to look at what Project 2025 has to say about housing and zoning. According to Shelter Force, an independent publication that serves and covers affordable housing and community development practitioners across the United States, quote, "Project 2025 could harm lower-income buyers with this direction that Congress, quote, 'prioritize any and all legislative support for the single-family home.'" Project 2025 advocates for maintaining single-family zoning while resisting efforts to expand multifamily zoning, unquote. Shelter Force also quotes Noel Porter, head director of Government Affairs, the National Housing Law Project, who says these directives illustrate how Project 2025 is, quote-unquote, "wrong-headed." Other HUD changes proposed in Project 2025 include getting rid of housing discrimination protections and enforcement, including the Biden administration's affirmatively furthering fair housing rule, eliminating mortgage, escalating mortgage insurance premiums, and eliminating grants for first-time buyers. Project 2025 also proposes to eliminate HUD's climate change-related policies and guidelines. Affordable housing advocates have pointed out that such policies will worsen our current affordable housing shortage. So when I see my neighbors comparing the comprehensive plan to Project 2025, I get kind of confused. Opposing multifamily home, multifamily housing, insisting that single-family zoning needs to be, quote-unquote, "protected" from somebody or something, that's what Project 2025 actually calls for. Although I don't think anyone means it this way, and I understand not wanting to have a four-story building built right next to your house, I don't know where people are getting sick from, I find it odd that some of the loudest critics of zoning reform proposals are residents of two of the most expensive neighborhoods in the city, Northburn Parks and Lowerburns Park. Someone recently told me that Lowerburns Park got its name back in the day because it's where untenured faculty at the university could buy homes, with Northburns Park being affordable to the wealthier tenured faculty. Today, I don't know any junior faculty at the University of Michigan who could afford to live or do live, have been able to buy houses in Lowerburns Park or in Northburns Park. Out of curiosity, today, I did a search, and one of the cheapest homes sold in the last five years that I could find in Lobupa was sold for $375,000 for a one-bed, one-bath house built in 1901, whose listing explicitly framed it as a potential investment property. That said, I understand people not wanting to have more students, but we got to do something.
Thank you.
Good evening. Adam Goodman, 400 Virginia Avenue. So I want to specifically address, I think it's item 10B on the agenda that was added kind of at the last minute this morning, which addresses proposed building heights in the proposed low-rise residential district. This is clearly an issue of a lot of community concern, so I kind of wanted to rewind the tape and look back at how we got where we are in this conversation. So as far as I'm aware, the first mention of specific building heights came up at the July 2024 Comprehensive Plan Subcommittee Meeting, with 35 feet proposed by the consultants and staff team, and some commissioners expressing a desire for a modest increase. At the September Subcommittee Meeting, 35 feet was again presented, but the planning team asked the commission, well, the Subcommittee, for feedback. Chair Lee suggested increasing it to 48 feet for consistency with something in the building code, and other commissioners on the Subcommittee agreed. In October, the planning team held a big public open house at the downtown library. I went to it, but still shared with the public a plan that said 35 feet, in spite of that September discussion. In January, the full Planning Commission met and reaffirmed a preference for allowing taller four-story buildings. And a few weeks later, in February, staff presented their viewpoint to City Council at a work session and expressed concern that Planning Commission was pursuing a direction contradictory to what had been shared with the public in the engagement process, implying, not in any words that I heard, but just how it sounded to me that the Planning Commission was going rogue. And now, because of this discrepancy, the Planning Commission is once again being asked tonight to reverse your prior direction on how to regulate scale and form in the low-rise residential district. Commissioners, I don't think you should do this. Now, what staff said at that February work session is ultimately true. The engagement process on this particular issue was flawed. That is not your fault. You, commissioners, gave clear direction at the appropriate time, but somehow it was not heeded, and as a result, our careful, over a year-long public engagement process that took pains to solicit input representative of the entire community did not adequately or honestly address this issue. Now, yes, you are receiving some input on the subject from the sorts of folks who are willing to show up repeatedly for public comment. I don't believe that input is representative of our whole community, and I don't think it's appropriate to make a highly consequential decision based on it. So given this situation, I believe the only appropriate way forward is for the comprehensive plan, which is supposed to be an aspirational document anyway, to simply leave this question, you know, the precise height unanswered, so that we can revisit it in the zoning process, and at that time, we should revisit it with a clear understanding of what to present and ask of the public. Thank you.
Thank you. Hello.
Hi. I'm Alice Ralph. I live at 1607 East Stadium Boulevard. I don't have a neighborhood association. I didn't plan to speak at all, so you'll notice that, but some of the things that I did not hear tonight were about children. Another thing was about generational wealth, and for which the only path in this country for many decades has been the ownership of a house. If you can't afford a house, you will not develop wealth. That is well-known by economists. Also, generational growth. Sometimes kids end up living in their grandparents' homes, and that's a good deal for them, if the family owns a house and it passes down through generations. There are not going to be any of those things with a blanket approach to housing development. And I'd like for there to be something with more humane bases for developing a plan. So it would be more like organic development, which takes time. And transportation was not mentioned very much. If you go on the borders of Ann Arbor, into the townships, there are rows and rows and rows of townhomes, condominiums, and multifamily homes. I mean, there's no gap between them except for the streets. So we only have so much land in Ann Arbor, but we have all this land around us. And I've, I've been, I drive around Oklahoma, Oklahoma. I've been thinking about Oklahoma because I grew up there. And that's another thing, is it was a sundown town until 1968. I don't know if anybody knows what that means, but I was shocked when I was an adult, when I found that out, because I didn't, I had never been, I'd never seen the sign on the side of the road that says that. So when I was, I had gone off to college in Wisconsin, and I came back once, and I heard about this university professor that had been invited from Alabama to come and teach at the University of Michigan. He was talking to the president of Oklahoma University, who said, "We would like to invite you to be in our College of Education." And he said all these things, and how wonderful it would be, and how they would enjoy having him on faculty. And he said, you do, he was on the phone, before cell phones or video. "You do know I'm black?" And the president of the university said, "Yes. Do you want to teach here?" So that's all. I don't have any more time for that, but I wanted, I wanted the children to have a voice.
Thank you. Welcome.
My name is Robin Grossius. I live at 719 Spring Street. I'm in a family that's seventh generation. We live in an 1860s farmhouse. I'm president of the Water Hill Neighborhood Association. My phone, my text, my conversations have been blowing up the last two weeks. We've organized four times. The first time was when the Black Elks Lodge wanted to expand. They had this huge building that they wanted to build that we all would be looking at. The only proposal was from a developer. The developer was not willing to make the change, and we came out against it, and we were successful. They didn't build it. There were other options. The other options would have been to have single structures, maybe side-by-side, not attached, but it would have been a completely different profile. It would have saved their efforts. The second time that we organized, we started playing music. I think some of you have probably been there. Yeah, the Water Hill Music Festival. The third time, we actually did something the city can't do for us. We provided a walking safe zone downtown. We sweep our sidewalks through community contributions. I don't know if you guys know about that or not, but it makes it walkable. Well, we're going to do it a fourth time now, because we feel that we've been wronged. A lot of us have invested in this place. Dick Siegel, the Schneel Sisters, all kinds of musicians have moved into that neighborhood. My family's been in there since 1950. In 1880, we were on Main Street. We just moved up the hill. We feel wronged because we've invested a lot of money and effort into making homes. Most of us were what you might call hippies that moved in there originally. That was the area of town that we could live in. And we've been investing in these houses and making them affordable for us. The tax base is going to make it not affordable for us as elders. I believe I have five minutes, by the way. Yes, as an association, you do. Well, that's what I was told. Anyways, I think it's wrong. I think you actually have good places that you can increase density. I'm also a real estate agent. I have a builder's license. There are many things that I actually know about that I think you guys need to listen to, and I would really encourage you to slow down this process. I love your transportation corridors. I think those are perfect. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello.
Hi. Sorry, I think I'm the last one, maybe. Kevin Downport, 723 Spring Street. I would just like to express my support for one particular idea that came out of the plan and the study, and I've heard some criticism about it on the commission, so I'd like to make my pitch for it. It's the idea of an innovation center around the north campus. I'm involved in the startup community here in Ann Arbor, and I firmly believe this is an idea that could potentially satisfy several objectives in relation to the housing density and development, and maybe even have a side benefit of fixing some, you know, traffic issues. But Ann Arbor has made good progress in developing a startup environment, especially in biotech, but that takes nurturing, encouragement, lab space, et cetera. I also think this type of development could be successful in pulling the center of gravity away from downtown Ann Arbor. A tech hub could be more of a catalyst to creating a new downtown versus the TC1 development, those developments. I also believe you need to go where the population is, and in this town, as everybody knows, over half the population is students of this town, so you need to go where they are. And I do believe this could organically spawn both commercial and residential development in that area. So you have north campus that does house the engineering and the arts colleges, but there's little to keep those students there or living there. It leaves them wanting to live downtown and commute back and forth to north campus. So there are about 12,000 students in those colleges on that campus, and if staying there is not seen as a penalty but a benefit, it could be a game changer for the cost of housing downtown, I believe. So I view this as an opportunity to generate revenue for the city and save maybe some taxpayer dollars, but I'm not banking on that. But the idea is to make it a win-win with the university and the city's goals. Now, as far as who's land and who pays for it, I believe the university could and should play and pay a significant role in this development in infrastructure costs. The university has stated that they look to benefit from this type of development, but so should the city. There's no reason you guys shouldn't benefit as well, so it shouldn't be a zero-sum game. But this does require engagement and collaboration with the university, which I'm not seeing a lot of in the council in general. But I see examples of this working in other university towns, relatively local, but one closer to home is Tech Town in Detroit. That's been a shining example of collaboration with Wayne State and tech startups there. So I would definitely like to see you guys broaden your perspective and take advantage of this idea. I think it could be a good idea for a bright future.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Appreciate you. Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Claudius Vincents. I live on 545 South Fifth Avenue. I'm a 41-year resident of the city of Ann Arbor, and I'm here in person tonight to thank you all for engaging in the comprehensive plan process. With all due respect to our planning staff, who work very hard and are very earnest, the quality of community participation in the planning process has been very low-quality. That is, the criteria for the measure of quality of participation is not its scope, that is, the number of meetings that you have, the number of people who come to them, or the number of people who speak at them. Because you could have limitless people speaking, but if you don't do anything with what you hear, then community participation is very low-quality. Quality participation is when there is a thorough investigation of the situation at hand, and that the representative voices, the diverse voices of the community, are heard, and it has some influence on the end, on the decisions that take place. I see no evidence of that here. Most of the people I know, who are bright people and very aware, are not, have not, are not aware of this process. Second, community participation is also about the representation of diversity of interest on the Planning Commission. My understanding is that the Planning Commission has one member who has been chief real estate officer of the largest commercial real estate corporation in Ann Arbor, and who now manages real estate for a venture capitalist firm, capital firm, sorry. Four other planning commissioners have property interests in land development. Three commissioners are landlords with rental property in the city of Ann Arbor. There is a strong representation of for-profit people who stand to benefit financially from this process. They may not even know that they're going to benefit financially, but I bet that they do. I bet, I would just say, my simple response is, you need more community participation.
Thank you.
Good evening, Planning Commission. My name is Sarah Ellen Strongman. I live at 1534 Woodland Drive here in Ann Arbor, and I'm faculty in the Department of Afro-American and African Studies at the University of Michigan. Longtime listener, first-time in-person caller. At the last planning meeting, which I watched online, multiple people compared the comprehensive plan to Project 2025. I live on 545 South Fifth Avenue, so just a stone throw away from here. And I wanted to mention something that nobody addressed tonight, and that is, what if you don't do anything? What happens then? Because where I live, I see every day the development pressure that's in that neighborhood and everywhere around Ann Arbor. It's enormous. And you guys know it too, because you are reviewing these projects on a weekly basis. And quite often, they come to you as PUD, which are Program Unit Development, which are basic zoning violations, that they approach you, and you sometimes agree with them, sometimes you don't. It goes to city council, and they even go against your recommendations, and they still vote for these giant projects. If you want to know how downtown will look if you don't do anything, go to the South University neighborhood on a windy day. It will be like that times 10. So you have to do something. And all the people who say, "Oh, just wait," that's a disingenuous argument. Even if you scream it, it's still disingenuous, because the pressure is enormous. And you have to find an equitable solution for this. An equitable, yes, it means involving everybody in the city, including, yes, this word, "our" one, yeah, including the ones who are on the other side of the moat. We have to do this together. And so whatever you come up with, it has to be equitable, because density comes with a price. It comes with noise. It comes with traffic. It comes, but you have to spread it out, and that's how you make, solve this problem. You don't solve it by not doing it now, by delaying it, for sure not. It has to be done now, and it has to be done equitable. So please take that into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else present that would like to speak at this time? Mr. Garber, welcome.
I admire your stamina and equanimity. Chairley, I'm Ken Garber. I'm a renter at 28 Heaven Hill Court. I'm not here to talk about the comp plan. I'm here to talk about Agenda Item Number Eight. That's, those are the UDC amendments to eliminate by right site plan public hearings and PUD site plan public hearings. I understand that they're to be replaced by public comment. The main difference there is 15 days public notice for the public hearings versus presumably four days for the public comment. Now, I don't know about you, but consider the plan you'll be reviewing in two weeks, the Arbor South Plan, massive project, complex public-private partnership. I need more than four days to notice to study this one, starting with watching the November 13th City Council Work Session on this subject. So, you know, I constantly hear that there's nothing the public can do to change a site plan that meets code, that these are administrative approvals. But the UDC is not a full and complete expression of our community's wishes around development. There are huge gaps, mainly around affordability and sustainability. Arbor South, 2,500 parking spaces in a transit corridor. I'm pretty sure this is going to come up in two weeks, even though this plan meets code. And spoiler alert, I'm going to bring it up when I'm here. So my point is that, you know, we have a civic duty, we, the public, to call out flaws in site plans, whether they're by right or discretionary. So, you know, back to the public comment, the four days, we might not even get that. Here's what I know about the constraints. Your bylaws specify posting agendas the Friday before the meeting to the extent practical. Mr. Lendert has been very good about this, but a future planning director might not be. The Open Meetings Act just says that meeting agendas are to be posted two hours before the meeting. I'm not saying that staff would do this, but a future one might. By approving these UDC amendments without codifying public comments somewhere, you're opening that door. So to conclude, I'm against these amendments to begin with, but if you do approve them, please specify four-day notice in your bylaws. Otherwise, it's just the Open Meetings Act, which is completely inadequate, two hours notice. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Garber. Do we have anyone else present that would like to speak at this time? Of course.
Just wanted to confirm, Mr. Chairman, will there be a separate public hearing regarding the UDC amendments? Or is that, or should it come up?
Actually, yes. We will have a public hearing at the Item 8A. Yes. I probably actually should have said. The last question was whether we would hold a public hearing for the Section 8A, the UDC, actually what Mr. Garber just spoke about. And the answer is yes, we will actually hold a public hearing. So I probably should have actually said, we should wait to hold that one until Section Eight.
Not on the agenda?
Oh, okay. Oh, it's not?
But you should.
Oh, yeah, yeah, we will, yes. With that, anybody else present that would like to speak at this time before we move on to remote callers?
It's hard to hear you.
Thank you. Can you hear me now? Is there anyone else present that would like to speak at this time? I like to always just give a few moments. Okay, thank you. Remote callers. Manager Kelly.
Mr. Chair, there are currently six hand raised, the first of which is Eric Ivanczyk. You have permission to address Planning Commission for three minutes.
Good evening. My name is Eric Ivanczyk. I'm speaking to you from the south. I know many of my neighbors are deeply interested in our city's comprehensive planning and future projects, and change can be adopting. But understanding the history of single-family zoning might help us see its impact more clearly. But any single-family zoning dominates housing in American cities. About 75% of residential land is zoned this way. And you must grew up in neighborhoods like this, so it might even seem normal or even ideal. A single-family zoning has a specific origin. It began in 1916 in Berkeley, California, and prevented duplexes, townhouses, apartments, and other housing ties from certain neighborhoods. The goal was clear, to keep minorities out of white neighborhoods. Even now, single-family zoning continues to have this very same effect. In Ann Arbor, where about two-thirds of the population is not Hispanic white, single-family neighborhoods like mine are overwhelmingly less diverse than the city as a whole. With little or no change, that is the character that will be preserved. The intent of a policy is its outcome. Single-family zoning limits housing options, drives up prices, makes ownership harder for future generations, and prevents families from accessing neighborhoods with better schools and tough opportunities, or forcing them into long commutes. These are its outcomes, and therefore, this is the intent of single-family zoning. Fortunately, cities in states across the country are recognizing these problems and taking action. Cities like Minneapolis, Arlington, Gainesville, Charlotte, and Walla Walla have reformed single-family housing laws. States like Oregon, California, Washington, Montana, and Maine have eliminated it altogether. Many of these places are far less progressive than Ann Arbor, yet they must have the courage to make these principal changes. Even the federal government has supported zoning reform, with former President Joe Biden's administration offering grants to encourage cities to allow multifamily developments, while Donald Trump pledged to preserve single-family zoning. I choose to live in Ann Arbor because I believe in my neighbors' fairness and compassion. I trust that, when given the choice, we'll support policies that promote equity. Thank you.
Thank you. Manager Kelly?
Karen Hart, you have permission to address Planning Commission for three minutes. Thank you. I'm Karen Hart, former planning director years ago. Been through a lot of complex planning processes with the city, and I've been heartwashed by the diversity of voices that up until now had been refreshingly contributed to the process. But I was waiting for what's now happened, where people who, you know, resist change get very upset. And there's a lot of good points that have been made all around, but I'm just here to say, I live in a single-family house. I'm tired. I have very limited income, and I can't even afford to sell my house with a mortgage, because what I'll get out of it is I'm not going to be able to buy anything else or even maybe rent. We can't just keep doing what we've been doing. And I would urge the Planning Commission to be like Cory Booker, not like Charles Schumer, and brave, and move forward with change, because the total amount of land that's going to be affected by new housing is still not enough to truly solve the problem, but we have to do something. It's just, you know, my child can't live here, even if she wanted to, just because there's no way that lower-income folks can do it. They just can't. And so, yeah, there's a lot of good ideas about how to change code, but make it general in the plan, set up a direction. Don't get hung up about how tall, how far back cows and trees. That's for the code. Find it out there. Let's have a really good plan that truly brings some change and addresses the housing affordability crisis, to the housing crisis period that we have. Don't water it down now. It's like self, you know, it's like being afraid of Donald Trump, and so you're self-censoring. Don't do that. Move forward and be courageous. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Manager Kelly?
Mr. Chair, if you could, one moment. Yeah, that's, it was that. We have a report that it's hard to hear public callers through Zoom. If you could just give us one moment.
Yeah, yeah, no problem. Should we take a, like a, just a five-minute break while we fix this, and then we'll come back and continue feedback? Is that okay?
I think that would be fine.
Okay, great. We're going to take a five minutes. We'll be back at 9:26 PM. Thank you.[1363.21]
Team one, two. Can you hear me? Testing one, two, three. Testing one, two, three.
Thank you for your patience. I'm going to call the planning commission back to order at 9:32 PM, and we are now resuming with our virtual callers. Hopefully, we have our Zoom fixed up. I got you, boom. I hope I didn't break it.
Thank you, Chair Lee. There are five callers with their hands raised. The next caller is phone number ending in 534. You have permission to address the planning commission for three minutes.
Good evening. I'd like to thank everybody that spoke. I know a lot of people probably left the room, but everybody expressing their opinions. That's what the comprehensive plan is all about. It's a community vision for the future of our city. So I really appreciate that the community is speaking, and they don't have to all agree. One word in particular that I heard tonight, I think, can reconcile a lot of what is not in agreement. That word would be effective. If we can create an effective comprehensive plan and subsequent zoning, we can address our community's goals, our sustainability goals, our affordability goals. The current process is not ineffective. That's pretty obvious. The product won't be effective if the process isn't effective either. For over 30 years now, I've provided gentle density, affordable and workforce housing here in Ann Arbor. We can do this without hitting half of our community against the other half of our community. I think a lot of the people that spoke who are hoping that these changes will bring about attainably priced housing for themselves are unfortunately being misled and would be very disappointed when they find out what's being proposed won't make housing attainably priced for them. The effort to fill the supply from the top down, supply-side economics, whether they use trickle-down, filtering, chain migration, whatever word you want to put on it, it requires, what I'm hearing, requires filling from the top, building predominantly unattainably-priced housing, and then waiting a very long time for it to produce anything, if anything, that would be attainably priced. The people who spoke tonight will not see their rents go down because of what is being discussed in the current comprehensive plan. I think we can change that policy direction by directly addressing the segments of the market that we want most to fill, not the unattainably-priced ones, but the attainably-priced ones. The Ann Arbor Community Land Trust is a way to effectively and directly address that segment of the market. I applaud that nonprofit, and I support it. We need more direct measures that are targeted towards the segments of the market that we want to see impacted, not relying on indirect measures, which is the basis for the plan that you've been discussing and the basis for the city policies that we've been seeing.
Thank you. And for the record, that was Mr. Stalberg, I think. Name an address first, please. Thank you.
Our next caller is phone number ending in 345. You have permission to address the planning commission for three minutes.
Hi, this is Kitty Cunn. I'm calling in from the fifth ward. I'm calling in to ask you to please pause the comprehensive land use plan and bring it back to the drawing board so that more input from residents can be included. Branded, some of us who have time to watch local government meetings are aware of the plan, although I don't agree with its content, but there are many, many more Ann Arbor residents who only recently became aware of the plan. You say it's no big deal and merely a guide, but you certainly know that the comprehensive plan is more than merely a guide. It will be the blueprint used for our city zoning, and that zoning determines the future of Ann Arbor. So, all residents should have a say. You call yourselves progressives, but true progressives do not rule from the top down, and they do not advocate for trickle-down as Reagan did. So, please, pause the comprehensive land use plan so everyone who chooses to help create it has that chance. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next caller is Jamie McDaniel Hodges. You have permission to address the planning commission.
Hello. My name is Jamie McDaniel Hodges. I live at 1225 Kensington Drive, located in Ann Arbor's fourth ward. I want to address the planning commission with regards to the proposed comprehensive plan as it reflects two residential zoning districts currently referred to as R1 and R2. Kensington Drive and Marlboro Drive are currently single-family zoning with some duplexes that have been grandfathered in, but not currently allowed to create new duplexes. We are a target for developers to buy low and charge high rental rates or home costs. I will confess that a large group of single-family zoned homeowners, including myself, missed the memo. Well, maybe quite a few memos. We are now paying attention. You can say, yes, we should have been paying attention to the planning commission and our ward council representatives. Through this ordeal, we are learning where and how to sign up for information to receive communication from our ward representatives and from the city. All we had to do was send an email requesting to be part of the communication streams available. Perhaps a postcard to all residences might have helped. Now, I am asking to be allowed back into the city's good graces. I was clearly ill-informed. I had COVID, 2024 election, January 6th, Trump, Musk. A lot's been going on. I am asking that we step back and communicate with all interested neighborhoods and wards. Communicate with us so we are all clear. Then bring it to a citywide vote so we are truly part of the process that makes us a democracy and a vibrant city that welcomes all. Evaluate the transit corridor growth first. Let this take effect and grow before we move on to other things. Grow the Ann Arbor Community Land Trust program. That will make the difference, not putting money in developers' pockets.
Thank you.
Our next caller is Greg Matthews. You have permission to address the planning commission.
Hi all, my name is Greg Matthews. I live at 1208 Brooklyn Avenue in Lower Burns Park. I regret that I can't be there in person tonight. I have a cold, so I'm using Zoom to spare you from my germs, but not my opinions. I'm addressing the comprehensive plan generally and specifically on the proposal that was added to the agenda today. So, to start, just indulge me for a moment with a short personal story. I have two young kids, and the other day, my five-year-old made a little card to give to her preschool friend who lives a couple of blocks away, so we walked down there to deliver it, and as we passed some houses in my neighborhood, they had yard signs up that say "Neighbors for More Neighbors." And my daughter asked me what that sign meant, and I said, "People put up this sign to tell others that," excuse me, "that they want to let more houses be built so that more neighbors can move here. What do you think of that?" And she said, "I'm like that, too, because I want there to be more friends." Now, City Council set out five clear directives for this comprehensive plan. One directive is, in the context of a largely developed city, make recommendations for adding new homes and densification in single-family zoned areas and other areas and zoning districts. Your next steps in authoring this comprehensive plan have to be evaluated against the directives and the broader vision that City Council and the majority of residents support, and that is allowing missing-middle housing in our current R1 and R2 districts, and in fact, providing flexible zoning rules so that new homes will actually be added in reality, not just in theory. So, even though our current zoning doesn't explicitly state where people can't live here, it does state things like you have to have a certain-sized lot, you have to have your roof lower than a certain number, your house has to be so far from the property line, and all of these rules have had the effect of excluding people. The working class, artists, other lower-income, middle-income households are effectively unable to live in the city. And I'm concerned that this proposed motion that came up today attempts to make some of our neighbors more comfortable by setting up some of these rules, but will actually have the effect of preventing the addition of new homes, preventing that missing middle in the residential zones. One commenter called it micromanaging, and that sounded right to me. So, please, when considering this proposed motion and other efforts to micromanage other people's properties, consider what the outcomes will be. Increasing housing here is going to take us decades. We don't need to slow it down even more with onerous rules. I think it's just unlikely that we're going to see raising, as people have put it. We're not going to see the George in the middle of Burns Park. It's going to be okay. So, I want there to be more friends, too, like my daughter, and if the impact of any part of the comprehensive plan is that we don't allow more friends to live in Ann Arbor, then we're failing at our task. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next caller is phone number ending in 326. You have permission to address the planning commission for three minutes.
Hello?
Hello.
This is Jeff Crockett. Can you all hear me?
Yes, we can.
Oh, great. Okay. I have a number of concerns, but my primary concern is that what has been presented so far is not really a comprehensive plan. When I look at the comprehensive plan on your website, it basically says that the comprehensive plan includes seven other plans, the sustainability framework, land use plan, State Street corridor, downtown plan, parks and rec, natural features, and the tree line, also the comprehensive transportation plan. Now, the last iteration of what I think is in the comprehensive plan that you all are presenting was a slideshow presentation done in November, which does not include a number of the elements that should be a part of this. And that includes impacting neighbors' character, equity, protection of historic resources, traffic and public transportation. We're in the middle of implementing a transportation plan that includes bike paths, and there's a lot of concern about that. I don't see any reference to that in this plan, and if you're doing safe streets as part of a major initiative, you need to include this in the comprehensive plan. The infrastructure, utilities and infrastructure, we need to know in advance how much housing our infrastructure can support. The time to do that is not after, is not after we have a huge increase in housing, it's before. I would encourage, now, the good news is, Ben Rappas just released a brilliant comprehensive plan, and I would encourage you to go and take a look, and you will note that eight pages, or nine pages of that comprehensive plan credit hundreds of individual people who provided input to the plan. Currently, the way this is set up, we provide input by going online. The problem with that is there's no public disclosure about who provided that information, and I understand also that it was possible to have multiple entries. So, there's no indication of exactly who has provided this input. I would encourage you that when you include in this plan a list of the individual names and the people who spent a lot of time providing the input. Sorry, I've got a cold. The other thing is that we've got a major problem with...
I'm sorry, your time has elapsed. Our next caller is Hannah Rose Stanton. You have permission to address the planning commission.
Hi, City Council. My name is Hannah. I'm a graduate student at the University of Michigan, and I live in a graduate student co-op. co-op. This co-op means that I am essentially 1/12th the owner of a very large house, and this may be the closest that I ever get to actually owning my own home. This is a very unique situation. This organization has been around for a really long time, and I want you to consider very creative, bold ways that this comprehensive plan can include unique living situations like the one that I'm currently in. My living situation is currently the only example of affordable housing of everyone who I've talked to and spoken with about their rent in comparison to other co-ops in Ann Arbor. This co-op truly meets the definition of affordable housing, and so I want to thank you for your work and your support and your time for working on this comprehensive plan and to please consider some unique alternatives that allow for upzoning and push high-density housing and also that support transportation. One of the interesting things that I kept hearing come up throughout this whole evening, and I have been listening since the very beginning, is that people are really concerned about the noise and where are all the cars going to park. And of course, as we know, cities are not loud, cars are loud. And what you have a commitment to Vision Zero to uphold, and I want to encourage you to continue to follow through with that commitment, both through the comprehensive housing plan and through the transportation plan, because those two complement each other. I am also car-free in Ann Arbor, and I'm able to do that because there is bike infrastructure and there is public transportation available. And yet, still today, when I went to go get groceries at Trader Joe's, I had to cross a four-lane road without a crosswalk to get to the nearest bus stop with all of my groceries because there is no crosswalk available. And of course, that was on Washtenaw Avenue, which we know is controlled by the state of Michigan and not the city. But all of these things tie in together, and so that's, I just want to thank you for your time, and please consider all of the creative possibilities that you could support to make this really a livable place for people who can afford to live here, thrive here, can afford to buy a house here, and will also want to stay here once they graduate. Thank you.
Thank you.
The final hand raised this evening is phone number ending in 464. You have permission to address Planning Commission.
Oh, hi. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Oh, thank you so much. Linda Burella, Ward 5. Based on the new memo and late addition to the agenda for tonight, it seems you listened to the mass outpouring of resistance to the current version of the comp plan as expressed at the last meeting. And in the emailed letters you received, I thank you for that and appreciate the indication that you may change an important detail of height in the low-rise residential plan. However, I don't think that offering is enough. I support the call tonight for you to go back to the drawing board for two reasons. First, there are so many other things wrong with the draft version and process and important missing elements. It's not a holistic plan. It's focused, it's so heavily on density, but it neglects elements critical to a community's quality of life. Protection for natural features, for example, is given short shrift. That's something that's been a component of all our previous comp plans. I'm not sure if the Ann Arbor Community Land Trust is mentioned in the draft, and it should be. The city needs to do more to support and expand community land trust if it truly cares about affordability. Second, the process for community input was flawed. I'm not going to lay the blame on staff, who I know work hard in their attempt to fulfill your direction. I think the buck stops with you. The flawed nature of community engagement is abundantly clear from the number of people you've heard from who are blindsided by what's in the plan. They didn't know what was going on. There were avenues you could have directed staff to take to publicize this more broadly. Some of those were suggested tonight. It seems that people in the urban planning community, who mostly share your specific paradigm of high density as the solution to all ills, were clued in, and a handful of residents who religiously follow city meetings, but not the rank-and-file resident. Examples of the failure of community input process, just a few. The appointing steering committee was ineffective with many absences and ultimate virtual standing. One member who resigned said the quiet part out loud, to paraphrase, "I came to realize that we were useless, accomplishing nothing." The survey, as most city surveys, contained reading questions, and was not constructed to prevent users completing at multiple times. The results are being touted as if they are based on a scientific random survey. It certainly was not that. Most egregious failings presuming something about the planned low-rise residential to the public in numerous engagements and then changing the parameters. That really blindsided people. You heard their anger at the last meeting. I feel that the current plan will not achieve the affordability and sustainability we all desire. We can achieve increased density beyond TC1 in a more sensitive way. More thought needs to go into this. Ann Arbor leaders once renowned for independent thinking, not following the latest hot trend. I believe we can do better and find ways that will actually get us to affordability and sustainability. One avenue is the Ann Arbor Land Trust that I mentioned earlier.
Thank you. Your time has elapsed. There are no further hands raised.
All right. Give it a few more seconds. Okay, with that, I'm going to close this public comment. Thank you for everybody that spoke today. For the record, I don't think the draft is out yet. I haven't seen one. So just as a point of clarification, there is no draft out. It should be hopefully coming out soon. Okay, we're going to move on to Agenda Number 7, which is the public hearing scheduled for the next business meeting. Manager Hank?
For the Tuesday, April 15th, 2025 City Planning Commission meeting, 2845 South State Street, also known as Arbor South, site plan for Planning Commission approval. A proposed site plan to construct approximately 15 new buildings in downtown-style development around two existing buildings at 777 and 789 East Eisenhower Boulevard. New buildings include a hotel, eight residential buildings, restaurant buildings, and three parking structures. The development proposes 93,500 square feet of new commercial space, approximately 150 hotel rooms, approximately 840 apartments or condominium units, including 230 affordable units, and approximately 2,500 vehicular parking spaces. Construction is planned in five phases. The 23.5-acre site is Zoned TC1 Transit Corridor District.
All right. Thank you very much. We're going to move on to Section 8A. This is unfinished business. This is the UDC Sections Related to Public Hearings and Ordinance Amend Sections 5.28. General Procedures 5.29.4 Wetlands Use Permit 5.29.6 Site Plan 5.29.7 Area Plans 5.29.11 Plan Unit Development District of Chapter 55 of the Unified Development Code of Title V from the Code of the City of Ann Arbor to remove public hearing requirements from numerous reviews. With that, we are going to move on to staff presentation, and I think all of those are online. So Mr. Leonard?
Thank you. So this is a carryover from your March 18th agenda. There are numerous UDC amendments, three of which were originated from a series of actions initiated by the City Council. In December of 2023, the City Council received a report, A New Approach to Economic Development, which was authored by the City Administrator's Office and outlined a series of reforms as to how the city approaches economic development in a variety of fronts. The resolutions were around creating an office of the economic development, creating that office in the city. We have a new director who has been on board now for a couple of weeks, I think. A resolution to support sustainability in the built environment focusing on strategies to support sustainability. A resolution to implement new processes and programs to support placemaking and tax-based improvement, supporting those two goals. And most applicable to this is a resolution to encourage housing development at all income levels by focusing on improving efficiency and alleviating burdens in the land development process. So this, to frame, was a specific direction from the City Council, tasked to staff and you as the Planning Commission, as the body that recommends to the City Council on legislative relative to our land use regulations. This specific direction is quoted in the staff report, which was shared again from March 18th. That is, to eliminate the public hearing requirement for site plans at the Planning Commission. However, that Planning Commission meeting should be restructured to allow public comment for each site plan that appears on the agenda. As a reminder, there's a couple of references to it during public comment this evening. Site plan review is an administrative function. We speak to what is achieving the public health, safety, and welfare by enacting ordinances that we then measure development against. And so the UDC is an expression of our requirements for development to occur in the city, and by law, when a development meets those requirements, it is our obligation to meet our end of that obligation and approve that development for it to occur. That's based on transparency, fundamental principles, and expectations of property rights, and how people can understand what they can, can't do with their property, and rely on that information. Site plans are approved in numerous ways. Sometimes they're approved by the City Council when they're accompanying a legislative action. For example, a site plan that relies on a PUD zoning, for example, couldn't meet likely our regular requirements, so that's why that site plan is going to be considered by the City Council at that time. Site plans that are, often the term is by right, that is, they are uses that are permitted by the district, the site plan meets all of those expectations and development requirements that we have set forth in our ordinance, are often approved by this body, the Planning Commission. And then there's an additional category of projects that have a smaller scale that are either approved by me or don't require site plan at all. In all of those cases, the UDC is structured in a way where the same information is required, the same diligence and evaluation by multiple departments and areas of expertise, and they are all measured by the same criteria of those ordinances set forth in our UDC for whether or not they comply with our codes or not. We have, in our local ordinance, added additional requirements. Specifically, we have added public hearings as a requirement to many administrative steps, including, in this case, site plan review. And so the City Council, as part of a series of recommendations to, in line with a lot of the comments that we heard tonight, finding ways to ease the burden, ease the process, facilitate more housing development to occur in the city. One of the ways to do that is looking at our process and eliminating, making it more efficient, more streamlined, easier, less costly, and by removing requirements that are not mandated, in this case, by state law, that is one way that we can do so. The proposed ordinance in front of you has a series of changes relative to that. I want to be clear that the direction from the City Council resolution was focused on site plan, but we have included some related provisions that I think are fully within the spirit of that direction as well. The ordinance converts are a section in the UDC that is public notice and intends to rebrand and define that section to be specifically the procedures and requirements for when a public hearing is required. To be clear, public hearings are still required in a lot of circumstances, any legislative action, any special exception use. So those will continue to require public hearings, and that's why we still need that section despite any consideration of these proposed changes. That same section currently goes beyond public notice requirements, and at times, it lists what types of projects require that. The intent of these changes is to remove that duplication and allow those processes prescribed in our ordinance speak for themselves about when a public hearing is or isn't required. It also removes the public display of plans at City Hall. This is something that I presented previously. We used to have a series of paper plans in City Hall. We now submit all of our, receive all of our site plans digitally. That gives us the ability to publicly share them. They're available at the time of application. We not only accept those publicly for our review, our staff review, but we actually also endeavor to publish those on a dedicated map available to the public so that as applications are under review, people have the ability to view those both by year, by typology of application, and of course, click on that plan and select that. So this would remove that requirement that occurs in City Hall as it's now provided in everybody's hall. It removes a series of application types from other portions of the ordinance, again, trying to let the processes speak for themselves. There is some explicit requirements that when a public hearing is to be continued at this body, it would continue to follow the typical procedures. Because Zoning Board of Appeals also follows public hearings under this ordinance, I thought this was an opportunity to extend that convention to that board as well. Again, this is a proposed change that is in the section, not explicitly requested by the council. Wetland use permit is also an administrative function. So that is an action that is often accompanying a site plan. Again, it can happen with site plans at the Planning Commission level, at the City Council level. This would remove an explicit public hearing for that. Otherwise, if the Planning Commission recommended and ultimately the City Council enacted the removal of public hearings for site plans, that ancillary application would still require a hearing without that action. And then finally, also removing public hearing requirements from area plans and PUD site plans. So in those circumstances, area plans don't have any reliance for building permits. They are conceptual plans. While they do lock in a version of the ordinance by which would apply to a development in their current state, they are not reliable for pulling permits. You still have to go through the site plan process. So I'm proposing to remove that public hearing requirement similarly for PUD site plans. PUD site plans would continue to be measured against the zoning that is being proposed as part of a PUD or previously established by a PUD zoning district. To be clear, PUD zoning itself is a legislative action that would continue to require a public hearing to occur in those categories. The directed ordinance also instructs the Planning Commission to maintain a public comment for site plans on agendas. That is something that I think the most, like I said, we are already sharing versions of the site plan with the public via website. How we do that, I think, is an opportunity for us to evolve. It's expectations that you could talk about in your bylaws. Frankly, it's also procedures that we could just establish as standard operating procedures in our department. So I have not proposed codifying those requirements to frankly provide flexibility as we learn how and if we want to structure those things within the confines of bylaws or, again, just procedures without requiring legislative changes to how we approach that. The impact to efficiency, sort of the core mission of this, is that right now, because of public hearing requirements and timing that is invoked under the current code, we are typically about three and a half weeks, a month out before having to make a decision about whether or not a plan is ready to appear on a Planning Commission agenda. That can be challenging for staff, frankly, to be trying to predict whether or not maybe we're in the final stages, what we hope are resolving some outstanding issues, or if they're going to linger for some period of time. It can be challenging on the contrary to a petitioner, where if their comments have seemingly been, they have seemingly satisfied all of our expectations and requirements of code, and our response is, we can get you on an agenda in three and a half weeks. That is adding time delay and cost to developments. It may be incremental, but the time it takes to go from purchase or option to realizing construction and occupancy, every piece of that timeframe can matter to the cost of the overall development cost of that proposal. Happy to answer any questions after, during your deliberation.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Leonard. All right. We're going to go on to public hearing. This is an opportunity for individuals to speak up to three minutes on this item. We'll first hear from those present and then remote participants to speak remotely. Please press star 9 if on the phone or use the raised hand feature on Zoom. And for phone access, please call 877-853-5247 and enter meeting ID 977-663-41226. City staff will identify callers by the last three digits of the phone number or by name if available, and you'll hear an automated announcement when it's your turn to speak. Please ensure that you're in a quiet area and mute any background noise. And for all participants, please state your name and address at the beginning of the comments. Is there anyone present that would like to speak at this time? Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of Planning Commission. My name is James DeMoor, and I'm a resident of the 3rd Ward, and I'm a former member of this body once upon a time. I'm here to speak to you tonight about the ordinance changes. I... I am uncomfortable with this. I think, in light of the previous public hearing, we talked about participation, we talked about transparency. I'm struck by what former council member Westfall mentioned about, he worded the word insulation earlier. I think he made a career making the City Hall more insular from change of terms in council to suggesting redevelopment-ready communities in terms of, you know, streamlining the process in terms of planning. I think that those methods are work for a city that has more economically challenged. It's clear this is not the case, at least right now, in the city of Ann Arbor. You know, Ken Garber, I gave you a lot of credit. You took a lot of my talking points. Thank you for that, and did a great job, probably better than what I could. But getting to the specifics, area plans, PUDs, these are not by right. I really think that the public should have a chance to weigh in as soon as possible once these projects come in. And I appreciate, in terms of, you know, trying to streamline things, but the public really needs to be engaged at all ends in terms of the process. I know we're dealing with analog technology, and maybe it's okay to have a printed copy of the site plan or plans as they come in. Also, wetlands, natural features, it's really important to get citizen input. We're a very educated town. People may have some ideas in terms of a particular parcel that's going in in terms of a natural area preservation or even a wetland. It's important to get a question of, you know, input in. Treat the citizens as an asset, not as a liability. I think in terms of streamlining, I think what I would say to Mr. Leonard, I would say to Planning Development Services, I think the real logjam is once a project is approved and dealing with the various permitting process, which I've heard is challenging. And to speak of the development community, that's great, and they're an important stakeholder. Just to put things in perspective, remember that Donald Trump himself cut his teeth as a developer. The entire public needs to be involved in terms of this. Getting to the by right, and this is where I have the most trouble, I think it's important to reconsider the concept of, once again, including the concept of protecting the public health, safety, and welfare. And whenever natural features are disturbed, the minimum necessary. I think the public needs to weigh in as well. Again, we need to use the public in terms of partners rather than liabilities in terms of the process. Thanks for considering my comments.
Thank you.
Hello. I want to echo a lot of what the previous speaker just said. I think he said it better than what I could say, so thank you. I am Stacy Har. I am a resident of 2004 Cressland in the Patton-Gill neighborhood. I've been a renter and homeowner in Ann Arbor for quite a while now. So it is possible, you can actually rent and then buy. Okay, so I also sent you guys my email for my, whatever I'm going to say coming up, except it's going to be different because right after I sent it, it became full of typos. So I apologize for that, and I will try to state it a little more clearly, and I'll send you a version that's not full of typos, but it really wasn't there before I sent it. Okay, so I have been told several times now by members of the Planning Commission, by my city council reps, that you guys want my opinion. You want to hear from the community. It's good to know, and I'm happy to share. I really do hope you mean it. One way to demonstrate that you care about public opinion is to keep the requirement for public hearings, for site plans, sorry, public hearings for site plans. Residents, voters, taxpayers need to be able to address city officials in a public forum on large development projects. We should get a chance to question and understand the development of projects that are going to be happening in our neighborhoods. I realize it may add to the developer's timeframe. Well, and that's one of the many moving parts for a developer. I mean, that's just part of the game. I understand that that is not ideal, but if that time is truly too costly, then perhaps the project should be reconsidered. It may not be very sound if just the part of getting public opinion is a problem. I'm sure that there are many other ways that you can save time, that people that know more than me can express, and those ways don't have to include effectively silencing the residents. You also may argue that the zoning already supports the project, and so you don't need to hear from us. But then, I can't help but conclude that you're not actually interested in what the community thinks. Additionally, I would like the Planning Commission to keep the requirement on letting neighbors know when a lot is going to be divided. That certainly does not cause any restrictions to anybody. It's just common respect and politeness. Most of us, and I assume even you guys, all of us, would really appreciate a simple heads up, just a simple heads up. I know my neighbors and I, when something's going to be going on, we give each other a heads up. They're going to come cut my tree, it's going to be loud. Oh, thanks a lot for letting me know. Some just call it being neighborly. Thank you very much for your time. Please consider keeping public hearings. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else present that would like to speak at this time? Mr. Lowe?
Hi, I'm Alex Lowe. My big mouth and I are back. If you plan on shutting me up, this ordinance change isn't going to do that. From my reading, in fact, this ordinance change isn't going to reduce my ability to waste your time at all. So, I don't know. Do it, don't do it. I don't get the big deal about this. Yeah, I feel like people are outraged by something that's not actually what they think it is. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else present at this time that would like to speak? Give it just a second. Okay, see no one? Or do we have any remote callers?
Phone number ending in 464. You have permission to address Planning Commission.
Hi, this is June Deborah Rauer again. I just want to say that I support what Ken Garber said earlier about review of site plans and what everybody before the last speaker said. I don't agree at all with the last speaker. I also want to say, in terms of participation, I want to thank you for not limiting the amount of public speakers tonight and at the last meeting. I think that says a lot about your sincerity to hear community input, and I would suggest that to keep up with that wonderful track record that you turned down this resolution to eliminate public hearings for site plans for the reasons that have already been expressed. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have other callers?
There are no other hands raised at this time.
Okay. Give it just a few more seconds. Okay, with that, we'll close public comment. Okay, we're going to move on to discussion. I'm going to reread, give me just a second, the proposed motion, which is that the Ann Arbor City Planning Commission hereby recommends the mayor and city council approve the amendments to Chapter 55 Unified Development Code. It's going to be a mouthful, sections 5.28.2, 5.28.3, 5.28.4, 5.29.6, 5.29.7, and 5.29.11. To remove public hearing requirements for the sections of the code as proposed in the attached ordinance. Do I have a motion, Commissioner White, since seconded by Councilmember Dish? We are in discussion if we'd like to kick us off. Councilmember Dish?
Okay, so I agree to, I'm really happy to see aligning public hearings to rezonings, PUDs, and SEUs. But I want to make sure that I'm understanding the difference that this will make. And if I'm understanding correctly, public hearings are noticed more effectively and notice is given earlier than a public comment, which is, public comment is simply a feature that goes along with anything that's on our agenda.
Yeah, I think generally, yeah.
Is that fair? That's fair, okay. All right, so if that's the case, and if it's also the case that most people don't know, they don't keep track of what's...
Why don't you tell everyone?
Hello? That's the thing that inserts typos. So, I think that the posted notice at a site is an effective way for people who will really want to know about it, to learn about it without having to track Planning Commission more closely than they necessarily want to. And so I wondered, I really appreciate the codification of the current practice that city post information about developments on the planning webpage and require that a project representative be named with contact information. I really appreciate that that's in there. And I just wanted to ask if there is a significant cost, and I mean that generally, time, I don't just mean pennies, associated with posting notice at the site of projects that would no longer have public hearings at City Planning Commission, but would have site plans and would have the opportunity for public comment? Because it does seem that it's true that Alex, Mr. Lowe will still be able to waste our time, but he would need to know that there's going to be a public comment, period, and not everyone is as attentive. And so I'm hearing just a lot of people came tonight to say, I'm not as attentive, and I, but it doesn't mean I don't want to be able to talk to you. So I'm only putting this up because of that.
I don't know the cost answer. I don't think that it would be significant in the context of a development project. Maybe more so for a smaller, but I think it's reasonable. To be clear, as part of these proposed changes, that site posting still happens for public hearing items.
Yes.
So when any of those, that would still happen.
Yes.
Under these proposed changes, it would not happen under a site plan.
Right.
As we presented previously, we intend to bring you some proposed language, likely starting with the Ordinance Revisions Committee meeting in May, of some exploring that requirement more broadly. It might apply to site plans, but it might also apply to public hearing items too. And I think the more appropriate place for that is likely in the community participation ordinance that you considered last meeting. We are ready for that language. We intend to bring that forward. That's a long way of saying, that's something our staff would like to pursue and discuss. I don't have the details of cost, but I think that that's an appropriate place to put it.
Okay, so then...
Stay tuned.
Yes, I kind of thought that's where we left it, but then, because we're talking about public hearings and site plans tonight, and last time was citizen participation meetings, which are different, I was not sure if we were all on the same page about, no matter what type of project, some form of notice at the site would be really nice in connection with either one or the other, citizen participation meeting, or that there will be something on the agenda, whether or not it has a public hearing.
No change to public hearing items.
Right.
I think that was raised at the last meeting.
Yeah, no change to public hearing, no.
With these changes, there would be, there would be projects that no longer had a requirement for a posting by the city, and therefore, no requirement of posting. We intend to explore plugging that with a requirement that the petitioner would be required to do so, but I want to acknowledge that if this progresses, there will be a gap in time where that doesn't occur.
Thank you. Commissioner Mills?
I appreciate that. Now that it is a little bit earlier than it was last time, I can think a little bit more clearly. I also understand where, how it might fit better in the other, the citizen participa, or the community participation ordinance. And because this is the place, there's nothing right now in that part of the ordinance about posting anything, so it wasn't a clear omission. Now that we're, like, this is the only place where it says something physically gets set on the property. That's my concern, is that once we strike this, if we don't actually go back and fill it, there may be no four by eight, or whatever the size is, on those Phase Two, and that's my concern. So I am supportive of everything in this, but I don't like striking the language for the non-public hearing things now about the, and it's specifically about the posted notices for public hearings. So we don't need to make changes. This can move forward. I'm going to vote against it because I worry that we will not fill that hole, and I think that that's important, to make sure that there is something physically on the site so that people know that they can follow it along the way. And I, and I think that, I know that we all share this, this is just my way of, like, rather than adding it to a commission-proposed business, like, this is the way that I want to, I think it makes sense to make sure that that hole is plugged personally.
Thank you. Do we have other commissioners with thoughts, comments? Commissioner Norton?
I'm trying to recall, too, what we discussed at the last meeting when it was so late, and we were all kind of a little fuzzy-headed. If I'm following things correctly...
You're getting there.
We're getting there. We, last time, we talked about also citizen participation meetings and lot splits, notices of lot splits or something, and neither of those are here now. You've set those aside for now?
You've approved those.
Oh, we approved them. See, I was so fuzzy-headed because we fixed them. That's right, we talked through a way to fix them, and now I'm remembering. Could you explain to me area plans?
Yeah, under the Unified Development Code, zonings must be accompanied by, under the UDC, we don't allow you to strictly seek a zoning absent a physical plan. So in some communities, you might be able to just come with an application to say, my property is zoned X, I would like it to be zoned Y. The City Planning Commission and ultimately council would decide, in the framework of uses that are permissible in that area, is it appropriate to make that zoning district change? Here in the city, we require that that be accompanied either by a site plan for development or an area plan. An area plan is a concept plan that is a display of how a development could be rendered under that proposed zoning district. It is not, it doesn't have the binding effect of a site plan that you could go and build permits, pull permits from it. The only benefit it does is it provides an illustrative example of one scenario about how that zoning might be realized, and two, if approved, it locks in the version of that code for future consideration of that project. So if the city were to make a modification to its parking requirements, or its lighting requirements, or its wetland requirements, and an area plan had been previously approved, whatever the version of those ordinances in place at the time would govern the city's review of that plan.
That sounds more like a discretionary decision to me than an administrative decision.
The plan still is based on the proposed zoning, so it is, I would say, it's, I think it's fair to, I guess the discretionary aspect of it would be the locking in of the version of the code, but it's still measuring that proposal against the standards for the zoning
How many do we get of these? Is this a common...
I think I've done one in nine years.
I've got the logic, I get the logic of removing formal public hearings from strictly administrative decisions because they are administrative decisions. If the, if the property owner complies with the, with the site plan, we have to approve it, right? And so there's, I recognize there may be some flux in that, there may be some interpretation about whether things are consistently applied, but it's truly not a discretionary decision. There's a risk of encouraging lots of public hearings on decisions where the city, where the Planning Commission's hands are really tied, and will take all of the hearing comments and then say, that's fine, but we can't do anything about it. They've made the requirements, we have to approve the plan. It's a counterproductive exercise. I guess I'm talking a little... I guess I'm talking a little bit to the audience here. So, I understand the logic of removing the public hearing requirements, as long as recognizing residents' concerns about wanting to know what's happening, as long as they're getting adequate public notice about what's coming up, and as long as they still have the ability to come and make public comments, right? There's still always, in these proposed revisions, there's still the possibility for them to make public comments.
That's correct.
So, I'm okay with these provisions. I'm still a little bit squirrely on the area plan, but recognizing the rarity of it, I guess I'll go with it, but I wonder, can't we ask that you remove the requirements about posting now? Why do we either have to vote this up or down completely? Or...
So, you can modify things before you recommend it to City Council. If it wasn't in these sections that we've noticed, I would suggest that we revisit that noticing. But in this case, the proposed ordinance is really changing the post, the public notice section from a more general framework that was inclusive of prescriptive state or state law-originated legal requirements, as well as city-initiated posting or hearing requirements. And I would say that if our intention is to separate that from, to make, to align our standards more closely with state law requirements, that was just my thought, that the more appropriate place for any posted signage would not be part of the...
Not part of the public hearing process. Notice for public hearing process.
Sorry, Commissioner, Dish is looking at me like I'm not making any sense.
No, I'm not looking at you that way. I'm looking at you, like, given the way this is written, I don't see how we could possibly exempt the piece about public notice for site plans that don't have public hearings attached, because this whole thing is written about public hearings. And the changes that we've made to what has, the changes that we've made regarding site plans no longer having public hearings at Planning Commission are driving the whole form of the way this thing is written, and so, this would not be a tweak. That, what...
What I'm suggesting would not be a tweak.
Yes, correct, sorry. I'm not supposed to speak directly to you. What my esteemed fellow Commissioner Norton is suggesting wouldn't be a tweak. So, that was why my face did that.
Commissioner Adams?
My recollection also is that these changes map with high degree of fidelity the direction from the city's report, which was adopted in a council resolution, and we were directed to make this change. So, I just, I support making it. Like, this was something council asked us to do, and we're an administrative body. So, if we have additional changes and additional things we want to do, I'd prefer to handle them separately.
Can I keep going?
Yes, Commissioner Ray.
I'm trying to navigate all of this. So, we could proceed with this, with the urging that we pick up the public notice piece as promptly as possible to minimize the...
Span.
The span where that's not happening. I'm also going to mention to folks sitting in the audience, I teach planning law. I've been doing that for 20 years. This stuff is confusing. So, if you are finding this confusing, you're not alone. This is a complicated process, and we're trying to do our best to make sense out of it and make it work the way it's supposed to work, so that people get the notice they need to understand what's going on, but not to overly burden the process where it just doesn't and shouldn't be overly burdened. That's what we're trying to navigate here. So, I'm pleading a little bit. Please accept that we're doing this in good faith, and I'm understanding better now what you're trying to do. I did read this stuff before I came to the meeting. And I really am embarrassed that I forgot that we approved things last time. I guess I was really pretty zonked. So, that's, those are all of my comments.
Thank you. Commissioner Abrams?
This is more minor, but last time, we made an effort to remove the word "citizen," but it's showing up a bunch here, so I can just list the sections where I see it, or you can do your own Ctrl+F to find it.
Yeah, I can make those changes. My apologies, I was very focused on that when we were reconstructing the citizen participation ordinance to be community, and I didn't do the same here.
I mean, I guess somebody should just Ctrl+F it in the entire UDC.
Then I got to post all those sections.
Yeah, exactly. I was kidding. But it shows up here four or five times, thanks.
Thank you for that. I will make that, I'll look for this.
Thank you. Councilmember Dish?
I'm sorry to jump in again, but there's, I think there is a Scrivener's error in this blue-lined part. It's the first line. Do you have it up? I have it up somewhere. It's right here. It's, it is "any," yeah, it's "any." "Any" doesn't work in the first line.
It's in the second line.
It's, oh, sorry, it's the first sentence, second line. Thank you.
Sorry, Commissioner, just can you help me navigate?
Yep, so, B, mailed notice of public hearings. Notice of all public hearings shall be mailed, shall be mailed. Oh, sorry, I'm not in the mic. Sorry, sorry. Notice of all public hearings shall be mailed, "any," not less than 15 days prior to the public hearing.
Oh, we can strike "any."
Right.
Sorry about that.
Yeah.
It was that phone we heard earlier.
It was.
Thank you. Any other commissioners with comments, thoughts? Yes, Commissioner Abrams?
Sorry, Mr. Leonard, I know you said this earlier, but can you repeat? If we were interested as a body in formalizing the number of days that the agenda needs to be posted prior to a meeting, when did you say, what did you say would be the appropriate venue for that?
I would suggest we do that through either your bylaws, or we just establish operating procedures. Like, my thought was that part of this is, that is a construct that we are going to be creating, and frankly, we might, we might evolve our thinking on it. And putting it in the code where we say it has to be within this many days, it just, honestly, it doesn't have to be in the code. You could adopt bylaws that say, "We will never put a site plan on the agenda unless notice that the agenda is published a week in advance." You have that ability to do that, and it's, just doing that with the bylaws or just our practices seems a little bit more flexible...
Yeah.
...and nimble, as we learn how that's working or not.
And the, right now, the reasonable, Friday of reasonable is in the bylaws, right? Okay. So, maybe I would like to just voice a desire to have that conversation.
Okay. Yeah, 100%.
Thank you. Any other commissioners? Okay, I do just want to also, at least cogitate how I understand this. Again, this comes down to the difference between discretionary and administrative actions, I think Commissioner Norton said it best. When a project is by right, it comes to us, we measure it for FAR, setbacks, permitted use, things of that nature. And the challenge sometimes becomes when you come and speak on a project that is by right, and you say, "We don't like it. We hear ya." We may even agree with you, but the UDC is the UDC. Our job is to administratively function and apply the UDC in every site plan that we receive. And so, the whole idea is about not creating a situation where you feel that your efforts in public participation is futile. We don't, we want to encourage additional citizen participation, we want it to be effective. And so, that is the entire kind of thought process behind this particular action. So, that's how I understand it. With that, I'm going to give space for any other commissioners to add any kind of additional thoughts. I do like where your head was at, Commissioner Mills, about the concept of making sure that there is some kind of a sign, or you want to know the things that are happening. So, with that said, any other thoughts? Or final comments? Okay, with that, we will go to a roll call vote.
Yeah. If, what I would suggest is that if you're comfortable passing it as it is, I've noted that we will be modifying the references to "citizen" and striking the additional "any." I'll probably, frankly, just signal to the city, when this progresses, to City Council that we've made the changes to the word "citizen" since your adoption of it, and based on discussion, if that's okay. I don't need an amendment at this table.
I think that's good, and Scrivener's errors is just that, is a Scrivener's error, so, does not modify the intent. And again, just for procedural purposes, this advances to City Council for adoption. This is not the final alteration, we make a recommendation, so, thank you. We'll go to a roll call vote.
On the motion as presented, Commissioner Norton?
You called me first, and I wasn't ready, yes.
Commissioner Adams?
Yes.
Commissioner Weatherby?
Yes.
Commissioner Mills?
No.
Councilmember Dish?
Yes.
Commissioner Abrams?
Yes.
Commissioner Hammerschmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Wyche?
Yes.
Commissioner Lee?
Yes.
That carries.
Okay, that takes us from Section 8A to regular business, of which I do not believe there are any.
Only three.
Oh, okay, this is the other business.
Other business.
Which we are going into now, Section 10, which is other business. This is going to be the Comprehensive Land Use Plan Review Process Discussion, and for that, we will start with Mr. Leonard and staff presentation.
So, it is April 1st. On March 31st, staff received a draft comprehensive plan. I'm gatekeeping that from you, from the City Council, and the public for about a week. Staff is doing a review for high-level factual accuracy. I have identified a few changes that I'm going to request from the consultants before we distribute it, and then in the second week, I anticipate sharing that draft with this commission, with the City Council, of course, and with the public. We will be sharing that with a new tool, the Engage A2 website, if I have that shortcut right. I think Commissioner Wyche pointed that out at a previous meeting. This is a new tool that we didn't have when we initiated this project, and we thought it was an appropriate place to start the next phase of this, so we will be posting the document there. We anticipate also posting the community engagement summary at the same time, a separate document, probably to be determined, but at the beginnings of the implementation matrix, but obviously, that'll really evolve as the goals and recommendations of the plan are finalized as well. So, big picture, that's going to happen. The document currently is about 140 pages long. It's beautiful, you're going to love it. And at the last meeting, I shared sort of an overview of the memo about how we are trying to navigate the process of taking a wide variety of feedback from many, many people in the community, from many, many stakeholders, and giving that information to you, because at the end of this process, you're going to give us a set of edits to this plan that we're going to turn back to the consultant to draft in your desired image and concepts. And when we first presented that memo to you, it fell a little short. So, Michelle's going to walk through a wider range of time to give you the space to do that, and we also want to have some just structural conversation about how practically you'd like to go through this work, and how we will take your feedback collectively, and when we're not sure if it's collective, how we will figure that out.
Thank you. Good evening, commissioners. With that, I'm going to go through the memo that we have updated for this meeting. I believe you originally saw this on March 18th, but based on some of your feedback, we have included a recommendation about how to approach this as a Planning Commission. We had originally proposed a tiered editing process where staff would take about four to six weeks to review this, give the consultants the first round of edits, and then come back to you in May. I believe what we heard at the last meeting is that you would like some more time, so if you look at the memo here, we're going to all be editing this simultaneously, aside from this week that we are going to take to go over some high-level edits with the consultants. We will make that public early-ish April, so that will give you that time that was previously dedicated only to staff. So, we will have a separate internal review process with staff, and then we will also be working with you. So, you can see during that timeframe, April to early May, I have a recommendation on how we can review this, but I'm open to discuss what you all think is best with a 142-page public document. I would recommend that we continue to meet as an entire commission to go over this. Originally, there was a subcommittee, but now that we have a draft, it's time for the entire commission to be reviewing this together, and that during this time period, we have working sessions in between your regular meetings, so that we can have additional time to work on this. I think that will give you about four or five meetings for you all to go over this together, before we take your comments and the public's comments back for the first round of edits. So, that is up for discussion, if you guys would like to talk about that. And then, secondly, there's a lot of content, and we've been hearing a lot of feedback from the community, and I'm sure you all have more feedback. So, we propose kind of doing informal votes on topics. If we cannot see a consensus among the group, that we then ask for a motion for you all to provide clear direction for us on how to move forward on certain edits. We've also moved up, then, the engagement, so we heard some students kind of upset that that was going to happen in the summer. It originally was going to happen in the summer when you all were reviewing it, but now that we've moved that up, we also plan to move up more community engagement. So, they will also be reading the plan at the same time during the same period. That way, we can collect your feedback and the public's feedback, and give that all to the consultants for the first round of edits. Also note, please, that this still has the same deadline in November. If you go through it, we would initiate the 63-day review period, that's required by state statute, August through October, where the public hearing would be held here first in October, and then go to City Council in November. So, we have not pushed anything back, we've actually just tried to give you more time by pushing the editing process up.
Got it. Well, thank you so much for the presentation. The memo is very clear, and I think this is a time for us to have kind of an open discussion just with respect to the process, and we will start with Commissioner Wyche.
Thank you. Thanks for the memo and the clarity there. I do have a, another sort of clarity that I would like to seek. I'll start with you, Mr. Leonard, and you can pass it off to Planner Bennett if you'd like. But in your initial comments, you indicated that you would take our feedback, and I wonder how you are distinguishing between feedback and direction, given that this is a document that the Planning Commission owns and is the author of. So, when I hear feedback, it feels like it does not belong to us, it belongs to someone else, maybe planning staff, and so, you take what we have to say, and then you decide how to process it. But if it is a document that we own, I wonder how you are distinguishing that, or how you plan to receive our, I would say, direction, but you didn't frame it that way. And I think that also happened at your work session with City Council. You talked about the direction that we gave you as feedback, and then you corrected yourself, and then said it was direction. So, it may feel a little pedantic, but it's really, really important to me to understand how you're thinking about this, so that I can frame my participation.
I don't use the term "feedback" to somehow belittle your influence. You have to adopt this plan. If you don't adopt this plan, we don't have a plan. So, when I am saying "feedback" or "direction," to be clear, if I, as staff to the Planning Commission and to the city administrator, don't deliver a plan that is adopted by you and ultimately, the City Council, we don't have it. So, I use the term "feedback" as broad, that from my perspective, it means edits, it means... it means edits, it means changes. As I have with you in work session and with council, I don't always agree. I will be honest with that. That's my job and my role to help advise you. But by feedback, it is changes, edits, and ultimately, if you, if this board, five people in this board don't vote to approve that plan, then we have to keep working until we do. Six, excuse me, because that's a plan.
Actually, thank you for that clarification. And I will come back to you, Commissioner Weish. One of the things that I actually want to do is kind of step back real quick, set a little bit of context. Because I think it's very important for us to understand what currently constitutes our comprehensive plan. It is eight different plans. Oh, eight different plans. Right now, we have Natural Futures Plan, Land Use Element, Downtown Plan, Ann Arbor Sustainability Framework, State Street Corridor Plan. Those are from 2004, 2009, 2009, 2013, and 2013, respectively. Sorry, that's five things respectively. And then there's incorporation of three plans. This particular comprehensive plan is intended to replace the five that are from basically the time between 2004 and 2013. There are three other plans. The Parks Recreation Open Space Plan, that's the PROS Plan, the Moving Together Vision Zero, that was our transportation plan, which was adopted in 2021, and the Treeline Allen Creek Urban Trail Master Plan. And so I do want to say, our comprehensive plan encompasses these eight components, of which five are getting replaced. Because, again, it's from 2004. Regularly, I'm referring to the Land Use Element, it's from 2009. The other thing that I want to help clarify is, the idea and the intent of the feedback that we gave at the very start was to, having eight different plans can be hard to digest. You're like, where do I look? And so the idea was to consolidate them, to make them more accessible to the layperson, to be able to better understand, oh, this is our singular document. Now, I think, we haven't seen the plan yet. Actually, part of the thing that's difficult for me is to even think about what structure we give feedback when we're not really sure what that 140 pages look like, right? I don't know how it's broken down. Is it broken down? It's five constituent components? So I'm not really sure. But it's a tall task to be able to improve legibility and improve accessibility to the plan. So I wanted to set that context, because I know it can be a little challenging. I mean, this is from January of 2024. It's when I have my notes. So it's been over a year on this one. So just to kind of refresh that context, it is currently comprised of eight plans, five of which are from basically the early 2000s. And this particular comprehensive plan update is intended to replace five of those elements. And I'm very interested to see how they approached being able to kind of absorb. So when we hear feedback, again, we are listening. I have taken very detailed notes. And I think, what you have put forth here in terms of kind of the engagement protocol of the commission, I do agree that it should now be the whole commission, and not the subcommittee. All of that said, it's tough for me to know, because I can't organizationally in my head know how to chunk up, and is it five sessions enough? Should there be more? I'm not really sure right now. But I just wanted to back up, give that kind of like high-level overview of like, what is the deliverable product that we're talking about? And again, it is the aggregation and the improved legibility and accessibility of five different types of plans. So I want to make that clear, just to set the context, and then we can talk about process. So, and Mr. Leonard?
Yeah, just, the product we're gonna be looking for from you is a bit of filtering of what we hear from the public simultaneously from your review.
Yep.
It's gonna be some aspects of feedback and ideas that staff across the organization is putting into the plan for ideation, for suggestions, for changes. And our goal is, we don't have, we don't have an unlimited ability to do 10 drafts of this. And so we're trying to package a lot of feedback together. Because it's your document, we want to do all we can to sort of serve up some of those components, so that they can be considered by you, so that we can, at least for this first batch, deliver the first round of edits from the authors, to the staff to do your work, to the consultancy, with the benefit of some public conversation from city staff input. So just to be clear, the product that we're gonna be looking for is the first round of edits to this document, ideally with the confidence that the edits that you are communicating are shared by you as a body, that that's what you want to see in the adopted plan going forward. I totally get what you're talking about, as far as it's hard to contextualize. I just want to take it even more boring and insulting your intelligence. Do you want some time to all read the plan before we start that process? Do you want that to be a more iterative process, where we, you know, once we deliver it, we're gonna set up a meeting and talk about the first 50 pages of it? How, that's kind of the direction. We are happy to do whatever you desire. We're just looking for any initial thoughts on how you want to approach that work, because you all might have different desires about how you would typically approach that work.
Commissioner Adams.
One of the challenges here is that we're having this dialogue over a document that we ostensibly own in a fishbowl. And I'm very concerned about how the 35-foot thing was handled. Because I watched that council meeting, and if I'm going to break with a staff recommendation, or with a public position, I want to know it. And my concern was that that discussion before that meeting with council was framed as a feedback session, an informal session, where we were talking about our feelings and thoughts nebulously about concepts in the plan. And I'm concerned about how that ultimately got framed with council. I'm concerned about the reactions that members of council had to that. And I'm concerned about the anchoring effect that that slide in a PowerPoint at a public meeting had, in terms of our ability to think creatively about the mission at hand. So to Commissioner Weish's point, there's a diff, if, I want, and this is for staff's benefit as much as it is for our benefit. If we're being asked to provide feedback, or if we are providing feedback, I'd like the mechanism of that to be a little more clear. Meaning, if we need a vote or a resolution to get something hard set into the plan, then that's the process I want to set up. If we're having a feedback session where we're talking about things, and we're just being asked for opinions about what we want, and it's informal, then I just want those, I want that as table stakes. Because that conversation got away from us, and I just want to avoid that happening again. Because, again, there's going to be moments where we may have difficult discussions about ideas that we have that go beyond what the public was shown. And if that's going to be presented later on to council, it's going beyond what the public was shown, I want everyone to be eyes wide open on it, staff and the planning commission. Because, and maybe this is on me, I didn't have my eyes open on what we were doing, and I was taken aback by how that was received, both by the public and by the members of council who commented on it, on the record. So I think, and I don't mean to piggyback on or change the point that Commissioner Weish is making, but as we move through the process, again, because it will be in public meetings, and we will be anchored to some extent around the things that are said and presented, I just want to be clear while we move through that process about what the impact is of what we're doing, and how it will be presented later on to somebody else. Does that make sense?
That's kind of what we want to talk about. I would take some issue with the framing of that work session. It was a work session, there was no motions. But the intent was directive. Like, at that meeting, I specifically asked the commission, like, we have these sort of branches in the policy of this plan that we're starting to draft, and I need your direction. And I presented to this commission that same differential that I felt of the public discourse versus where the steering committee and the subcommittee had gotten to. And I do, my recollection of that was that, yes, it was not a motion, but it was directive. I was asking for planning commission. Like, I was reflecting back, this is what I am hearing regarding low-rise, this is what I'm hearing regarding employment zones, this is what I'm hearing versus innovation zones, this is what I'm hearing versus the different core character districts. And I had that conversation with you. As the other adopting body of this plan, I also shared that same conversation with City Council. I thought that that was transparent, and I think that was fair to them, to give them the same advice that I was giving to you. But that's what I want here. We can have, we could have every detail of this plan be in a motion. If you are concerned because you felt that that was handled poorly by me, that's kind of what we want to get to. If you were uncomfortable with, like, what I was pitching is, I thought that that, I had pretty clear direction from the planning commission on those issues, and that's what I was communicating. And I wasn't asking for council to differentiate, I was reporting out to them. And they had a reaction, some of the council members had a reaction to that. They're continuing to have a reaction, which is sort of where another agenda item is coming from this evening. And so if your desire is to be really more structured, that's kind of what we want to talk about here. We can do it. It is your document, and I want to give you the clarity and ownership, so you feel comfortable that maybe that misunderstanding doesn't happen.
Yeah, I think that, you know, we've got a resolution in front of us tonight that reflects a staff position, I think, that 35 feet is what the public was presented, and what the public has accepted as acceptable for a four-unit building, is the 70% acceptance number. That was not clear to me during that January meeting, as an example. So what I'm asking for here is just more clarity around what we're anchored to, what we have in front of us. And if we are stepping beyond what the public has been, what staff's position, like, in other words, the staff position on that issue was not clear to me that night. That wasn't clear to me, that 35 feet was where we were sort of tethered to. And that's the resolution I have on the table tonight. So that's a disconnect, right? And what I want is, I want a little bit more, in terms of the give and take, I'd like to have that back and forth maybe grounded a little more in, instead of these free-flowing sessions that might get, we might lose, right? It didn't, I'm not speaking with a lot of clarity, but there's process discipline that we need to impose on this, again, because this is a public process.
That's why, understood, that's what we're asking. If you want more discipline there, that's what we're trying to figure out how to structure that.
So is that in reference specifically to the work sessions suggestion, that you would like them to all be regular meetings, and that there be motions?
Yeah, if we want to take action, we would have to hold those as regular meetings, just to be clear. You can't do motions at work sessions.
Okay, yeah, Commissioner Weish.
So two things. And this has been really challenging, I think, for me, as I have tried to navigate this. Because I've been very clear. I have not been ambiguous or unambiguous. I've been very, very clear about this from the moment that I joined the subcommittee, or the steering committee, that we were looking for higher height limits. And it was through a back and forth. We were in a work session, you presented, and you said, Mr. Leonard, that 30 to 35 feet is not going to achieve much of the goals of council as it relates to density in those residential zones. So you then turned to the committee and asked us, what is the committee's opinion about a higher increase? And before I could even say what I wanted, because I was excited, I was like, oh, great, here's the opportunity. Chair Lee jumped in and gave us a different framework. And to say that, when you got to the work session, it was just a report out, it negates the fact that you talked about wanting to restrict what was in the low density. So that's why I am confused. Because I continue to hear that this is our document, but the feedback or direction that we're giving got ignored. It got ignored when we gave, when I gave it in September, and, well, July, September, October, November, January, all the way to the work session. And so to me, it breaks a confidence for me to trust this process. Because it doesn't actually feel like it's our document. And that's the nature of my question. And so if that needs to happen in a regular meeting, because we're gonna actually do it in a public framework and actually have motions, that restores my confidence. Because having it in a work session where we're giving direction, but then that direction evaporates when the document comes back, that does not feel good to this process for me. And so that's what I'm ultimately trying to get at.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Weish. And I do want to talk specifically about the April, kind of the timeline of things. And so what I'm hearing, am I hearing that accurately, that you would like to have this all in a formal, like, non-working session? Is that what I'm hearing?
If I understood Mr. Leonard correctly, when he said he went to the work session, and he just reported out what he heard without communicating that the 35 feet came from you, it did not come from us.
35 feet came from me, and it was discussed with the public during our engagement.
Exactly. But that did not come out initially in the work session with council. And then the way that it was presented, it was as if we went rogue. Like, all of a sudden, we just deviated from this sort of agreed-upon discussion. And I was just like, what is happening? So that's why, if you're asking about what I'm trying to establish as a confidence-building thing is, it seems that in our work sessions, that feedback is being treated as feedback, not as direction. So then, the most confident thing that I would trust is to actually have it in a regular meeting with motions. Because you're already going to change the document. So the consultants who work for us presented a document to you, you're gatekeeping it, you're gonna change it, and then you're going to present it back to us. And you did not indicate you were gonna give us a changelog.
So just...
Unless they don't work for us. If they don't work for us, then that makes sense.
So the draft document refers to 48 feet for a low-rise residential, currently.
Understood. Just want to make sure to keep the tone collaborative, okay? Okay, let's keep moving. I'd like to give concrete feedback towards the overall process. So if we have these all in a regular meeting, I think that gives us, what, three, right?
We can schedule special meetings.
Okay, got it. Understood. I'd like to get a little bit more feedback. Commissioner Mills, do you want to add something?
Yeah, to the point of process here, I like the idea of having multiple meetings. I like them being public, like, as regular meetings, so that we can speak as a commission, rather than, because within our, within our subgroups, we don't, we don't vote on things on our committees. So if we're all together, and it's a thing where we can decide, like, this is what we want to see in the next draft, we can all go on the record and say that. I like that a lot. In terms of the question that was asked about, like, how we break up the 140 pages, I particularly think, because it'll be a public meeting, even if it's a special meeting, I'm imagining that there's public comment. I think we should publish the schedule, how we plan to talk about things, so that that public comment can be very directed at the section that we're talking about. And so it's hard for me to imagine what that is right now. But I also think that that will make it not quite so daunting, that everybody has to read 140 pages overnight. But I recognize that in your engagement with going to particular, you know, parts of the city, that that might be off-kilter. So that's just for that part. And I, also, I just want to note, maybe, but you can add in questions. I'm, we will get feedback along the way for particular aspects. And once, again, not being on the subcommittee, guys, I haven't known what we're talking, I mean, I know what we're talking about. I know we're talking about the comprehensive plan, but I don't, like, it's been tricky. Like, it's like there's a draft, but there's not a draft. So I've been very confused. So I'm glad that we can all talk about the very same things, because there's not a draft yet. Like, well, there is, but it's embargoed. How we get feedback from what you're hearing also in the, I'm very curious about how we get feedback from presumably staff will be hearing in April and May. Because if people don't come only to planning commission, I want to make sure that we can feed that in somewhere along the way. So I welcome thoughts on that.
I just want to make sure I understood. So your suggestion is that we go section by section. So we dedicate a meeting So your suggestion is that we go section by section, so we dedicate a meeting, so we can outline that, there are six sections, so we can focus meetings on two sections at a time, maybe with particular focus on some over others, like, the implementation. But I can outline that, if you all would like to see that. And again, this first week is really, like, just, we have a resolution tonight, we had public feedback, there are things that we haven't seen yet, it's going to be a very, very quick review without massive substantial changes before the Planning Commission.
Yeah, and I think I would actually second that, to be able to, you know, focus on specific sections. Again, what we're talking about is consolidating five different plans into one, and so we're going to want to try to make it more organized in terms of effective feedback sessions. So, Councilmember Dish, did you want to add something?
Yeah, I just wanted to second, I wanted to note that regardless whether these are work sessions, they're public, I mean, right? But I feel that when we, we are a collegial and relaxed body, and we often joke, and I think that's good. We are even more relaxed in work sessions. And when I went back and rewatched that meeting, because I was watching it against the Neighborhood Flyer to figure out, how did the things that got said in that flyer match what happened at a meeting where I was, and I didn't recognize it? And many of them were, I, I'm sorry, so sorry, many of them were ironic, some of the statements were ironic, so you want this everywhere? It wasn't, we will have this everywhere. And so there's a tone that we do in a work session that's more free-flowing, that's more creative, your word, which I think is right, that has, it's different than when what we know we are doing is speaking to resolutions and we are trying to get the language exactly right. And so I think there would, although I think that the document and we would benefit from more free-flowing, I don't think we can afford it, because Commissioner Adams is right, we are in a fishbowl, and things are hot, and that's not surprising, it's a comprehensive land use plan, good heavens. So I think we would be in a safer world if we made these regular meetings, and, speaking as the teacher that I am, the goal is for everybody to do the reading really carefully, and so I think we really do want to chunk it, because of 140 pages, people are going to fall asleep at different parts. And what we want is to everybody be awake for the same things. And if you guys have, if the planning staff would have questions that they want us to particularly pay attention to, those are good too. It helps people focus their attention and understand what the stakes are, and if you want to see one of my 24-page syllabi, I'm happy to share it, reading questions, yeah.
Thank you. I'm going to go to Commissioner Abrams.
I'll be brief, just a plus-one for the special meeting over the work session, I think that's a good idea. I think it'll be really important to publish in advance what sections we'll be talking about, so the public can know. And also, if there are specific, I think this is what you were just saying, Commissioner Dish, if there are specific things within those sections that are a primary focus, to publish that also. And, I had one other thought. Oh, no. Okay, you'll have to come back to me, it just escaped my brain.
All good. Yeah, Commissioner Wetherby, then we'll go to Hammer Schmidt.
So I think this is probably part of it, but I just want to say for sure that I would like to have access to the whole plan.
Yes.
Initially, so that, not that I'm necessarily going to read ahead, but I would like the opportunity, because I don't know what the six sections might be, and it might be really helpful to kind of read it as a whole thing, and then focus on each section.
Absolutely.
I assume that was part of it, but I just want to make sure that that's out there.
And all of the sections are highly interrelated, right? So, yes, you all have to do a lot of reading on your own, and whether you want to go section by section or read the whole thing through is up to you, but because it is so interrelated, it might, it might be best to read the whole thing through. Trust your judgment on that.
Thank you. And real quick, we'll go to Commissioner Abrams.
I just remembered, it's really quick, I just want to confirm, there are only two opportunities, there are two drafts, sorry, there's a first draft, or one revision and a final, is that correct?
So, once we give them back the edits in the middle of May, they will come back to us, and we are giving them a month at the moment, because we don't know the extent of the edits. There is a chance they could be done before that, and it would come back to you here on June 17th, so that, that's another opportunity.
So that's first draft, second draft?
Yes. And then we come back to you in July, and that's when we would start asking you here, that's where you would make your, like, formal forwarding to the City Council, where you are asking them to start this 63-day review period.
So does that mean the second draft is the final draft, or there is a final draft that comes?
So once you start the 63-day review period, which will be August through October, we're still going to be collecting feedback from the public. That's the designated time that they are given by state statute. So I know people have been unhappy with our engagement effort, but that's really the only standard, we've been doing this for a year and a half. So between August and October, you can still, you can continue to discuss the plan openly as a group then, we're just, in an ideal situation, we're not making massive changes during that 63-day review period, we're letting the public review, they can come. And then in October, we would have a public hearing with the Planning Commission, and then again in November with the City Council, public hearing. So there are three versions.
Okay, a first, a second, and a final.
Correct.
Okay, thanks.
And then a final, final, the six points, we'll go to, that was a joke, we'll go to Commissioner Hammer Schmidt.
Thank you. I'll just say regardless of if it's a special meeting, or a regular meeting, or a work session, like, I think we should do it in person, I don't know if you said that, but that's just my plug for that, for sure. This is, I don't know how we address this, especially if this is done at a regular meeting and there's public hearings and public comments. We didn't start our regular business today until 10, like, I'm exhausted, and this is going to be really important stuff for us to talk about, but it's going to be really important, I know people are going to want to come out and give their feedback, and I feel like it's going to continue along the same trajectory of, like, a long time, see, I can't even, like, I don't even have words right now, a lot of public comment. So I don't want to tamper down any of that, I appreciated the member of the public that said that she appreciated that we didn't cut anybody off, but like, at the same time, like, if we're having these really important discussions at 11:30 at night, like, what is that going to give us? So I just want to call that out as, like, a concern, I mean, maybe we're going to have, like, have to have more meetings, I don't know, so that we can actually, like, with clear heads, be able to talk through this. And I just want to say, like, I can, I can pretty much predict at this point that we're not going to have the consensus from us on this whole commission on every part of the plan, so I just, I just want to say that I do appreciate staff's role in this plan, even if we are the authors in, like, helping us bring all of this together, so, thanks, guys.
Thank you, Commissioner Hammer Schmidt. We'll go to Commissioner Adams.
Quick follow-up, are there public engagement materials planned, or is it just we're going to push the plan itself out, or are there going to be, like, explainers and summaries and other things?
Yeah, we're still figuring that out, frankly, we know that we're revisiting opening, open-house kind of formats, but I don't know which segments yet, or like, particular activities, but the goal of that is to present the plan in a way that we can talk to the public about it. So it's not trying to do new primary research, it's trying to get reflections on how we've memorialized our conversations over the last year.
I think if those materials are planned, they should be brought in here for our review first.
Question on that particular element, so in here, there's April through May, hold engagement sessions at the four library branches. We speak as a body, I would personally love to have more open dialogue with people, what does that look like? Can commissioners attend these open library sessions? I'm just, for clarification and my edification purposes, okay, so, I mean, I would encourage all of us to be there, so that we can, you know, kind of have, again, free-flowing dialogue, I'd love to have that dialogue, we have to adhere by the structural elements of the meeting, but, okay, great. So far, I've heard, essentially, given the compactness of 140 pages, and in order to be as targeted as possible, talking about potentially outlining and tackling specific ones, we talked about not doing it at working sessions due to the informality, and wanting to be a little bit more formal about the process. Have you gotten the sufficient kind of feedback, and I...
I think so.
Okay, I want to give, just one more space for commissioners, I know it's getting late, but, yes, Commissioner Wetherby.
Just one more comment, I think we, because of the pushing it forward, the ability to open up to university students, which sounds great, I really like that, I think it's a really good thing, but that is probably like the April 17th meeting at the library, or something, because classes, graduation is the 22nd of April, so if we're going to do that, that's, like, if there is going to be outreach, and I think I heard that, that that was one possibility, was outreach to university students, like, that's got to be nowish.
Soon or then later.
And so, just, if we're going to say that that's part of this, it's going to have to be pretty quick.
Sure. I do want to say, for anyone who thinks 140 pages is daunting, a lot of it you have heard before, you shouldn't be reading a ton of brand-new text or brand-new ideas. And I will say that it's very graphic, and so the pages are broken up nicely for readers.
Great. Do we have any other commissioners that want to provide feedback? Yes, Commissioner Orton.
Will you be letting us know the meeting, the dates you're suggesting for meetings, or how will that work?
Yeah, I can do that.
So we can get them on our calendars as quickly as possible?
Correct.
Great. Oh, yeah, Commissioner Mills, I'm sorry.
To Commissioner Hammer Schmidt's point, because really, like, bedtime is normally nine o'clock for me, guys. I don't know, I don't know if it's appropriate to, like, take a poll to see if we should move them up, or what the right thing is, like, what other commitments people have on Tuesdays, but, anyway, I'm just, I, yeah.
Yes, Commissioner, Councilmember Dish.
I jotted down the open Tuesdays, and it looks like 4:22, 4:29, and 5:13 are the Tuesdays that exist between our current regular meetings, so we would want to count on those. We definitely need to poll the body, I would support 6:00 PM or something, I know this is really hard on staff, so, obviously, you're part of the body, so you have a say too. But I'm sure there will, whether we have work session or a regular meeting, there's always public comment, and so, and we welcome it, but it is true that we are, none of us is going to do our best work on this plan between 10:00 and midnight, which has been our working part of this meeting.
Totally understood, and we should probably have a discussion about whether starting it earlier makes sense, so, okay. Any other comments, final thoughts? Just want to make sure that we create space. Okay, with that, we will end the other business, Section 10A component of this, we are going into Section 10B. This is the, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, Mr. Leonard.
It does require a vote of the majority of the commission to take up an agenda item after 11:00 PM.
Okay, got it. I will put up that for vote. What? Oh, well, but I guess as this is the, yeah, yeah, okay. Who would like to, can we get a roll-call vote, or a hand vote, of who would like to continue with this meeting?
Voice vote would be fine.
Yeah, voice vote, okay. All those in favor of continuing this meeting, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Y'all are night owls, let's keep going, okay. Mister, it's nine o'clock. All right, this is Section 10B, Comprehensive Plan Low Density Residential Memo. This is to discuss the low-rise residential land use area memo attached to tonight's packet, and we will start with staff presentation, Mr. Leonard.
Yeah, so certainly, I'm sorry for the frustration from the commission with this process, I feel pretty good that this seems to be a, the sole primary issue of frustration so far. As I said earlier, I think that during a working session in January, I reflected back, it wasn't a motion, but I reflected back your direction, and I had, I thought I had expressed at that meeting that I thought that the direction that the Subcommittee and Steering Committee had gone in was distinct from some of our public conversations that staff and the consultancy initiated. We initiated that conversation for what I thought was good reason, but I thought it was worthwhile to raise. We had that discussion at the work session, I took that direction as I am trying to deliver your plan to you. I shared it with the other body that intends to adopt it. I had feedback from council members, I don't think that there was, I wouldn't characterize as part of that working session that there was unanimity on the council about how they were considering the issue. Since both of those times, I have heard feedback from council members, from planning commissioners wrestling with this issue. In response to that, I thought the appropriate place, if the commission wanted to discuss it, was to put it on an agenda for that consideration. You have no staff recommendation for this, to be clear, I want to be clear that the plan as drafted is responsive to the Steering Committee and the Comprehensive Plan Subcommittee. This proposed motion could be approved, could be rejected, could be ignored, you don't have to take it up. My goal was, I will just broadly frame the conversation that's been happening over the course of the last year regarding this issue, is that, from the time council initiated this process with the contract, they directed us to add additional zoning into all areas of the city, including single-family neighborhoods. Through the beginning of that engagement process, that was a broad goal, that when I was having conversation at workshops and engaging with people, that was scary to many, it was undefined to many, and so as I indicated in the work session, as I indicated to the council, I and the planning consultant team attempted to respond to that by trying to reduce the range of concern over that by communicating 35 feet and up to four stories in all areas of the city. Because prior to that, we were having conversations that people were envisioning and asking us with real fear about the 10-story building that was going to be built next to their home. And we, despite a lot of educational materials about how density can be realized in different ways, that was a common conversation through that, and so that was an intention to try to scale, that we did envision a pretty significant change in the land use framework for these neighborhoods, but it wasn't to necessarily bring downtown to every neighborhood in the city. And so that's how we got to that work session, I took your direction, I reported that to council, and I've, we have run with it. Planning staff and the consultant team are binding by that. Since that time, like I said, I have heard from, I've received communications from members of this board independently, from city council members, that they are uneasy with what the appropriate balance is with processing that engagement and that tension over what an appropriate level of density is or isn't in different areas of the city. And I, I think that you will not find in the engagement that there are bright-line answers that are going to say that one answer is right and one answer is wrong. So I simply, I did work with Commissioner Dish, again, because I think these conversations are happening and being contemplated by council members, they're also being contemplated by members on this board, and just as we just talked about, it seemed like an appropriate place that if there was a desire to change that course, this is an opportunity for the Planning Commission to take a motion to affirm what direction I did take and the consultant team did take from the work session, or to give us alternative direction.
Okay, thank you for framing that, this is an open discussion. Commissioner Adams, then we'll go to Commissioner Abrams.
I think, and I'll sort of take some egg on my face, I didn't understand...
I think, and I'll sort of take some egg on my face. I didn't understand in January that, I, my perception was that we had conducted public engagement, which is in my mind, different from a public survey. In other words, I didn't understand our engagement to be testing the, does the public like 30 feet, 35 feet, four units, eight units, two units. I didn't understand that that was the type of work we were doing. We were showing the public demonstrative examples. So when the question was asked, what does low-rise residential look like to you? It felt like very much an open question that I could weigh in on without being tethered or anchored to a survey result that was specific and prescriptive. That's, that's on me. The reason I'm saying it's on me is, from the resolution tonight, it seems clear that that was not others' perception. And I'm being vague because I don't know, might be staff, it might be council, but some folks looked at those materials and came to a different conclusion. And came to the conclusion that when we showed the public 35 feet and four units, and 70% of the public at those engagement sessions said that's what I'm okay with, that that was now the outer limit or the prescriptive target that we were trying to hit. And that, that was not something that I understood at the time. I think that, you know, the resolution tonight, you know, I don't support it. I think going back to the guidance that we provided, which I understood to be broadly, we ought to be creative and aggressive, at least in the first turns of the draft, the first turn of the draft, and thinking about, understanding that we have public engagement on the other side of it, right? We're not done with it. So if we go a little too far, we can be pulled back in by the feedback we get. And to all of the public commentators tonight who talked about, we hope you'll listen to us. That's a really important part of the process, too. But if we go a little bit too far in the draft, we'll hear it. I fully expect that we'll hear it. So I didn't feel, again, in January, like that 35-foot marker or four units, that those were, and I'm not going to suggest that they were viewed as binding, but they've certainly, I think, anchored some people's feelings about what, where we can go. And that, that's unfortunate, because if I had known that, I would have scrutinized and reviewed those materials more carefully. I would have said, well, we need to ask, we need to show people other examples. Because, you know, now, now we're sort of in a spot where some people, some people are legitimately confused by it. And I want to put those people off in one category, because that's different from people who are exploiting it. And there are people who I think are doing that, too. And they're doing it with anonymous mailers and other things. And that's unfortunate. So to the extent that my comments tonight have been animated, it's been animated because this has felt like a little, and again, it's not, this is not entirely on staff. I'm on this commission. I could have engaged more. I could have read more. And I didn't understand. And what I'm trying to, when I'm using the phrase process discipline, I just, again, I want to make sure that when I'm, when I'm deviating from something that we think the public has spoken clearly on, that I go over that road sign, that stop sign, and like see it, right? It doesn't mean it won't happen. And it doesn't mean the council won't overrule me if I do it. I just want to see it. And I didn't see it in January, and I'm taking some responsibility for that. I should have. But the resolution tonight, I feel, is faultily premised. I don't think that our public engagement should be viewed as anchoring in the way that the, that the resolution anchors it. I don't think that three stories is the outer limit of what the public was saying yes to when they, when 70% of them looked at the building on a piece of paper or on a PowerPoint. I think that they saw that and they said, well, we want more density. We like that. And I think what I was hoping, when we had the January session, I was hoping that staff would go back to the lab and think about, well, we showed them these pictures. What do we think that means? And how can we get there with solutions that maybe are not unit-based or aren't height-based? Like what does that building look like to the people who showed up to those sessions, the 70% of them who said, we like that? And I'm not, I'm a lawyer, so I don't know the answer to that. I'm an amateur. That's a very long and rambling way of saying I don't support the resolution. I don't see a need for it. And I think the premise of it is false.
Thank you. We're going to go to Commissioner Abrams and then Councilmember Dish.
I also don't support it. And I, I don't know how to not, I think you provided a third option, which was like not even, not take it up. I don't know how to vote to not take it, to vote to not vote, but I guess.
Nobody's table?
Oh, nobody's made the motion. Okay, great. But, but one of the things that I find, or maybe that I need some clarity on is that my understanding up until this point is that the comprehensive plan would not drill down into things like beds per unit, number of homes per building, limiting height FAR, that it's a higher level idea. So it's confusing to me that this is starting to get into that level of detail. So I could, would, I can't even talk. I would like some clarity on that. Thanks.
So at that work session in January, I reflected back to the commission, not, again, not via motion, not via discipline, that you were interested in more flexibility, more height potential in low-rise residential, despite the decisions that I and the planning consultant team had made during the engagement to try and quantify that in a more restrictive way than what members of this commission are interested in. And as part of that, we gave, I gave you some examples. I was honest, with, with honesty, I was trying to give you examples of projects that were of varying heights with unlimited units, which were part of the context. And so like we, we talked about the Ellsworth Lockwood project, for example, and we talked about the George. Those are projects that, when at the, at the Steering Committee, the Subcommittee, and the work session were within the range of 48 feet and unlimited number of units. And so at that working session, I said, would you be interested in form-based standards that would somehow, without height or, without height or number of units, scale buildings in such a way that would be quote unquote appropriate for low-rise residential areas if we didn't think that the George and the Lockwood buildings, by example, were appropriate in those areas? And so what is being proposed here is just examples of those. I don't propose that those are the standards that would end up in a comprehensive plan.
But part of, sorry to interrupt, but part of what I have understood that has kind of gone awry in this process is that there's an idea that we're going to put 48 feet and no limit on lot combinations and no limit on units into the comprehensive plan, when my understanding is that that level of detail is something that happens later when we revise the UDC. That is a, that the comprehensive plan will not include that level of detail. So then I, if that's true, you're, you're nodding, so I think that's true. If that's true, then I don't understand why we would take up a motion to say three stories, number of units per bedroom, et cetera. It feels, well, it says up to three stories.
That it says.
Yeah. And asking them to consider requirements. It feels like those are all things, that is all a conversation we will have when the time comes. So what I have been telling people who've come to me in concern is I've been saying, I think there's a lot of response by the public to details that actually have not yet been deliberated by this body in a formal way. So yes, there is this working session, but like, we did not as a body vote to approve any height limit yet.
I think one of the things that I, I believe is happening is that you have a hard job. We've been talking with the community for over a year, and that's a lot of voices, and not everybody has the same opinion. And you have the unenviable job of somehow synthesizing all of that into a document that all you agree and city council agrees and is reflective of, you just had 100 people here tonight, and they're not all in agreement of what the same things are. We heard comments tonight of talking about the community land trust and opposing proposed changes to the low-rise residential. These proposed projects from this would require similar changes as prescribed in the low-rise residential. And so it's hard. That community engagement is not, it's not linear. It's, it's not, we didn't poll people to say, is 30 okay, is 35 okay, is 40 okay, is 48 okay, is 55 okay? That was a step, again, I'll, I'll own that mistake. I'll own that that was unsatisfactory to this commission. You don't have to follow it. I wanted to be honest and forthright that that was a way that we were trying to wrestle with community conversations where it was a concern when we were talking more ambiguously, where we were talking more about, it's going to be up to four stories or 48 feet, but don't worry, we'll figure out something so it's not imposing. That, that level of ambiguity continues to bring this tension in the community. This proposed language will maintain some level of tension, but your job is going to be to figure out what's the balance of that. And, you know, to blow it up, you know, somebody raised, do nothing. Well, to do nothing is to continue with more exclusionary approaches, to really, I think, lean into supply limitations, to lean into affordability. The more extreme is like to say, why do, why do we care about 48 feet? Well, let's, let's not zone. Like if, if we really wanted to open up flexibility massively, then we don't need to put any regulation. And that's part of the tension here is, is balancing all of that community input and finding what's the, what's the appropriate balance? What's the community desired balance? And part of that is some level of palatability that you're going to have to make to approve this plan where your balance sits and where the council's balance sits.
If I could just weigh in, Mr. Chair, to Commissioner Abrams' question, you know, I thought we were going to leave the specifics out. You can front load some of the hard stuff or you can do it later. And the more you front load some of these difficult questions, the less you punt. And so putting, the question is, if you put it in the plan, into the plan now, are you making the adoption, are you narrowing the field of what to expect? Or are you just pushing that for another day? So you could do it either way.
I, I take that point. I think it's a great point. I think it also limits us because we cannot change the comprehensive plan the way we can update the ordinance. So if we set a number, we can't raise it or lower it, you know? So that's why I understood that things would be, my understanding is that it's a kind of general guideline. Anyway, I, I've taken up enough time. There are, I have a lot of questions about, I don't, there's so many things I don't understand about the motion. I think I would be inclined to not take it up. Thanks.
Thank you. Commissioner Adams, do you want to respond?
No.
Okay.
I just wanted to emphasize that, like in terms of punting or not, I, I agree with Commissioner Abrams about that. Like I, it's, it's very hard to change the plan. It's, it's far easier to change code. So in terms of getting in the brass tacks, it's less a punt. I'd be happy to deal with the hard things upfront. I just, I'm reluctant that I can change the plan in year seven if I've got a problem with it. That's it. And it's supposed to be general.
Thank you. But why, I want to respond to that just really quickly. Not that the city of Plymouth or Nova, I just looked up their master plan and said, what do they say about low-rise density? Or what's the appropriate level of specificity in other case studies of master plans, right, or comprehensive plans? And actually, they do get into a little bit of specificity. They say that it's typically medium-density multifamily residential, density of 12 to 18 dwellings per acre with a maximum building height typically of two and a half stories. Like that is what the city of Plymouth, I'm just reading it as like kind of a guiding, look at other case studies to better understand what is the appropriate level of specificity. And so Nova has that as well. Not that, you know, is that the community that we want to emulate? Yes, no, maybe so. But I just wanted to give that level of context as far as what is the appropriate level of specificity. So, so it, it does seem like there is a certain level of, like, yeah, typically, it would be in this range. And then, yes, you're right, the UDC would probably prescribe. I do want to promote a point of clarification as well. I'm sorry.
Commissioner Wetherby's been waiting to.
Oh, God, give me one quick second. Let me, because I know that the 48 thing has come up kind of a lot, and I do want to make sure that I clarify exactly where that came from. As a point of clarification, in that working session, it was predominantly associated with the concept of trying to reduce conflicts between the Michigan Building Code and the zoning code. Actually, there's a new Michigan Building Code being adopted, April 9th and 22nd, for the energy code, respectively. And on a non-sprinklered, non-combustible type four slash five, that's a wood construction type building, what does the Michigan Building Code allow? And so the, the idea was to try to reduce conflicts. That's not an end-all, be-all. I mean, you can't argue with engagements, you know, protocols, what people have said that they feel comfortable with. And we have been hearing a lot of public feedback. And so I want to make sure to recognize we are hearing these voices and that we will, you know, respond accordingly. And so just wanted to clarify where that came from. It, it comes from the logic of trying to reduce conflicts between Michigan Building Code and the zoning code. So, Councilmember Dish.
Thanks for that clarification. And, okay, so I just wanted to clarify, I don't know what this says because it can say, you know, people are their own readers. But what it was meant to say is, yeah, defining low-rise residential as up to three stories. Because when the current council that was elected in 2020 and 2022 ran, we talked about triplexes and duplexes. Oh, am I, sorry, I'm too soft. So sorry. So we talked about that. That's vague-ish. Triplex is vague. It could be, you know, taller. And then this sentence, this is meant, this whole list is not meant to be prescriptive. The limiting numbers of beds per unit, I am aware, is inconsistent with form-based. I was not, I didn't mean that to go in there. Insofar as my feedback helped create this, which it did. But the rest of the section is, in addition, additionally, the planning commission calls for implementation recommendations. That's not the plan. That's zoning. So in the implementation, these, these form-based regulations could be considered. So this is not in the plan. This is about, we hope when you zone, because the public is having a really hard time understanding the difference between a plan and a zoning code. And they think the plan is zoning, and they also think that zoning causes things. And so there are, what we are doing is two steps removed from reality. And for them, it's a moving train. And so this language, though, I think it's, you know, a little mushy and unclear. And I had a role in drafting it, so you can blame me for it. This was trying to convey to them that there can be ways of not ending up with a whole block that is however many stories. And then, then there is another passage, which is opening up the possibility for greater height than three stories. The rest of that italicized language. And so this is actually meant to be vague and reassuring at the same time. And I don't mean that in, I don't mean it in the way that it could be picked up by an ungenerous reader. But I mean to acknowledge that we aren't in the business right now of spelling things out. And that accomplishing the kinds of things that, that's on the back of this flyer that everyone in this room said they wanted to see would require an end to single-family zoning. Because it's more stories. Some of these are three stories. None of them have side setbacks. Most of them don't have side setbacks, except for the, well, no, the cottage housing doesn't either. So people are getting really focused on height, whereas we know that minimum lot sizes and setbacks, especially side, but also front and rear, are extremely consequential for, they were consequential in producing the typology that we have, and they would be consequential for disrupting it. And there is no mention here of minute, of a unit limit because I am still committed that we don't spell out numbers of units. Because one bedrooms are great. They're needed. So I'd rather have 12 one-bedroom units than I would like four six-bedroom or 97-bedroom units. Strike that, just being punchy. So, to me, the most damaging thing that happened in the uptake of that work session, which was not understood by the public as a work session, it was understood as a vote on a plan. There was no plan, there were no votes. But that's how it was taken up. The most damaging thing that happened is that people thought that there was a bait and switch because they had heard 35. That wasn't our fault. There's a loss of trust in the process because they think it's a bait and switch. I'm not blaming anybody for that. I'm just saying. And there's a belief that we're not listening. And there's a belief that we're not listening. So I think it's urgent that we demonstrate that we are listening. And a way to do that would be to say, fine, three stories. Because honestly, as Professor Kaisers said, change in the residential neighborhoods is going to be slow. The meat and potatoes of this plan are the arterials. That's actually pretty big. That's a big change to streets. The transit corridors, that we've already done, we've already scooped our own plan in a way because we already did that. But now we're trying to support it more. We're trying to build it more thoroughly into the fabric. So those are the meat and potatoes. That's where Minneapolis got its density from. So I just am terrified about what would happen to this city if we have a political change that affects the implementation process of this plan. And it is out of my terror that I feel like I want to show that I'm listening and I hear that this community said, actually, we wouldn't mind a bit of an increase in density in the residential neighborhoods. That's certainly not what they're saying in Seattle right now. They're saying, look, you know, we have to stop this thing. They're earlier in their process than we are. Our community said a modest increase is okay. And, you know, we had a discussion in which we kicked around and pretty firmly settled on 48 feet. And that took them aback and we have not stopped hearing about it. And I speak to you differently positioned than you all are. You're planning commissioners and I'm a council member. So that is where this is coming from. And honestly, I helped draft a lot of it. So if you're angry about it, it's to me that you should express that anger. And I will be okay and we'll still be friends.
Thank you, Councilmember Dish. We'll go to Commissioner Hammerschmidt and then Commissioner Norton.
Were you before me? So clearly, this particular topic of low-rise residential land use has hit quite a nerve in this city based on what we experienced the last few meetings. I wanted to say something before I address specifically this resolution that's been weighing on me a bit since the last meeting. Especially since I chaired the last one. I really regret that I didn't speak up then and I don't know when to do it now because I don't get three minutes of public comment. But I just want to say something now on the record about things that I witnessed during public comment time tonight and last time and things in emails. Many people, obviously, like everybody's left, but many people have been very respectful with their disagreements with us of eliminating single-family zoning. But I'm really offended at this notion going around that all of us here at this table are beholden to some political faction, that we're all just developers and landlords who don't represent the views of Ann Arbor residents. Everyone up here works really hard and takes time out of our own lives and we think critically when we're making decisions about projects and ordinances. Comparing us to Trumpism and Project 2025 is incredibly misguided. And I understand that people are angry about a lot of things right now. But personal attacks, which I've seen the past two meetings, are really not helpful. Calling out specific members of the commission as having what you perceive to be some sort of agenda or complaining that we aren't educated or don't understand development is really unfair. And I'd really like that type of commenting to us to stop. You can disagree, and I know there's a lot to be fearful of right now in this country, but please understand that all of us up here, we live in Ann Arbor too. We are residents of Ann Arbor too. Okay, I just had to say that. Specifically regarding these single-family neighborhoods, I'm one of those reconsidering some things. I don't think I do want to push heights to 48 feet. I don't think we should be talking about heights in the plan at all. I think I'd like to focus on pushing density in terms of the higher buildings along the transit corridors where we've already resoned them and downtown and other areas that we're identifying rather than pushing it too much in what are currently single-family neighborhoods. Instead, allowing a more gentle density of townhomes and duplexes and triplexes. Basically what Commissioner Dish said in a better way than I'm saying right now. But leaving the comp plan language open without the high restrictions, just expanding it to allow more than just single-family detached. But regardless, even if we were allowed up to 48 feet, I know that these changes that people seem really fearful of and angry about, they're not going to happen overnight. I also think that's exactly why we don't necessarily need to go in opening it up too much. We can be a bit more incremental about how we're increasing density in these currently zoned, single-family neighborhoods instead. I also wanted to say something about these calls for us to pause and slow down. I respectfully disagree. We've been working on this plan now for well over a year. I've seen the planning team at all kinds of community events looking for input. Community engagement is really, really hard. They can't go knock on every single person's door. Despite what we heard from a few people tonight, I think they've done a fantastic job and I just want to commend staff for their outreach, especially given our limited media outlets and limited resources financially and otherwise. This is not a top-down effort by any means, but also a plan by consensus is completely unreasonable. Plans are also made to be updated on a fairly regular basis. So this plan is not a be-all, end-all. But we need a better future direction than the outdated plan that we have been working off of. Regarding a resolution, I think at this point, I'd like to just wait and see the plan and then deal with any changes that we need to make regarding the low-rise residential areas when we get to that section. So I don't really think the resolution is necessary. I guess is my long-winded way of saying that. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Hammerschmidt. Commissioner Norton.
She just said what I was getting ready to say. I totally understand where this is coming from and I have had conversations with folks. I don't want to punt. And we probably do need to, the more we can provide some specificity without tying the city's hands in the plan, the better that will make forward decisions. But now that I know the draft is going to be coming to us quite soon, I didn't honestly realize that. I'd kind of like to just wait and see the plan before making this kind of a decision. Because I think we'll be tying our hands unnecessarily before we can really think it through. And I'm feeling a little bit like Commissioner Mills because I wasn't on the subcommittee. So I've, all of this process, I've been kind of trying to catch up with. We don't have a draft plan. Everybody's talking about like there's a draft plan out there. There hasn't been a draft plan. Let's look at the plan. I would like to take this under advisement and maybe if there are things about it, Commissioner Dish, that you want to tweak, given your comments, maybe do that and not formally act on this today. So I don't know that that's a motion, but just a request to not move on it.
You would make a formal motion to?
Could I make a motion to table this until, or whatever?
Not do it.
To not do it, to not act on it tight.
Let me ask staff really quick. I think table means that it doesn't come back at a later date. So what was this specific?
So you can always, the commission can always vote to add it to a future agenda. You have the document. If you don't want to take it up now, you don't have to table it or postpone it. But just keep in mind, it ends up here because I put it on an agenda or you as a commission decide to add it.
Okay, Commissioner Mills?
I'm not going to make a motion, don't worry. Promise. I know. On this topic, so of what was written, I think the first part, I like the first sentence and I like the last part. The bullets in the middle, I think are like, probably raise more concerns than otherwise. I think if we're going to have a, well, we do when we have a comprehensive plan draft that says low-rise residential, I think that we have varying, people mean different things by that. And we need to kind of be talking about the same thing if we don't want to continue to have this conversation. So whether that is done in pictures or it's done in a number, I do not think that we can kick the can down the road because clearly there are different opinions in this community about what we mean by low-rise residential. And so what I heard is a lot of agreement that like affordability is a problem. I don't think anybody in here said that it was not a problem. And I did also didn't, there were 59 commenters. I didn't, to my knowledge, hear anybody say that business as usual is going to solve that. Right? The disagreement is about like what, how we solve it, how we evolve, how quickly we evolve. And honestly, like all this comes down to like, what do we mean by this definition? So this is a definitional question that I think we're going to grapple with one way or the other. And we can do it in pictures, we can do it in a specific number, but there's already two different numbers kind of out there is a real thing that we should, I don't think that we should take it out entirely because, again, we can do it now or we can have this fight again years from now and people will say, maybe we need to go back to the comprehensive plan. No. Let's, we are having, we have gotten lots of attention on this now. Let's have this conversation now. So I don't know, I don't know that it has to pass from resolution. And honestly, maybe the draft going out, having a number in it, if it gets people to say that's not, like what was that mean? I think that that would be, I encourage people to participate in this process. I also like the idea of saying like, hey, maybe for projects that bring us, tick all of our boxes. We want to do something extraordinary that most people can't imagine right now, like allowing next door. But like, if it gets us to all of our goals, like yes. But I think, what I hear is that everybody's willing to do something. And I think that in terms of multifamily everywhere, like I think that that's something that I'm hearing a lot about. And by multifamily, I mean multiple units, right? It's just, I think the height is the thing that there's a lot of disagreement about. And like, I just don't think that we should take it out entirely, so. And sorry that I was not here on the 23rd of January to say that because I would have said like, if you asked me what I mean by city residential, I live, all of my neighbors are multifamily, but they also are two stories tall. Like that's, there's no difference. I also live two doors down from an eight-story tall building. But I chose to live downtown, right? And I recognize that not everybody imagines downtown. And so I think it's, it's going to be a conversation that we should think about what people mean. Like the definition of low-density residential. And I'm going to stop because I'm fabulously.
Thank you. I appreciate it. I think then we don't have to take any kind of a formal action. We are just going to go move on to agenda number 10C, which is about our retreat. And because it is 1201, I think we could probably punt that for a later day.
Yeah.
Yeah, 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 for sure.
That was going to be my suggestion.
It says that we're talking about a May date, but let's, why don't we send out some emails and communications about that? And I know that the public wanted to, I don't think we have a date. So I do not think we have a date.
We don't have a date and we can move a lot of this conversation either to your next regular session, your working session and/or email. We'll sort that out.
Gotcha. That takes us to agenda number 11, which is the last public comment. This is a second opportunity for individuals to speak up to three minutes about any topic on any issue. We'll first hear from those present and then remote participants. To speak remotely, please press star nine if on the phone or use the raise hand feature. For phone, please call 877-853-5247. Enter meeting ID 977-6634-1226. City staff will identify callers by the last three digits of the phone number or by name on Zoom and you'll hear an announcement when it's your turn to speak. Please ensure you're in a quiet area. For all participants, please state your name and address at the beginning of your comments. Welcome.
Mark Scirbo, 2017 Fair Street. Thank you. I just want to say I really have enjoyed the new Engage Ann Arbor website and I'm excited to see the comp plan on there. And I would just ask that you include other documents that have not made it to the consultant's website and that are like maybe scattered on Legistar or like that FAQ is, I think, just sent out via email, but I don't know where it's stored right now. So if all of that can end up on Engage Ann Arbor, that'd be great. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have others that would like to speak at this time?
Very quickly, Luis Vasquez from 909 Barton Drive. I noted, well, I lost count of how many commenters tonight said referred to a flawed comprehensive plan draft, which has been pointed out that it has not even been issued. So just be aware of the outrage machine that operates here in Ann Arbor. You're going to be the target of that over the next few months. So bear with it and do not give up. Keep moving forward. Let's, you know, build more housing in Ann Arbor. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Mr. Westphal.
Hello again, Kirk Westphal, 3505 Charter Place. Thanks for the great discussion tonight. I guess I would, just knowing that this draft is coming, challenge folks to think about what, you know, what their own priorities are considering council's directives and maybe not considering council's directives. You know, is housing abundance the point? And what, knowing what the experience of other cities has been, some have succeeded, some have not in inviting, you know, more units to meet the housing demand. I guess I would challenge you to just think of, you know, will you be amenable to rules that limit the amount of housing, especially in places where there's clearly high demand? And if so, why? I mean, you know, we've seen developers come in, you know, with some of these student high rises right up to the allowable height limit. So clearly, we are excluding housing, project by project, when those come in and we see they're bumping up on the height limit. So I guess, you know, just, I'm jotting down my own list of, my own wish list before seeing the plan just so I'm not biased by what gets put in front of me because then we've seen this pattern of, if there's things we don't like, we start, you know, putting out those fires without really getting to the core of what we're trying to solve here. But looking forward to seeing the draft and thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Goodman.
Hello again, Adam Goodman, 400 Virginia Avenue. Thanks for the discussion tonight and all your work. And sorry, I'm delaying you go to bed even more. I want to, so one of the things I heard was that the idea that trying to resolve certain issues in the comprehensive plan by making it more specific would save us trouble later, right? I don't think this is true. Well, it's true in one direction. If you make the comprehensive plan express support for something overly restrictive, like saying that we will, under no circumstances, allow more than three stories. Period, end of story. Then like, then the matter is settled, right? Because we're not going to do a zoning ordinance that directly contradicts the comprehensive plan. But if we did that, then that's tying the city's hands, as Commissioner Norton said. And I don't think we should do that. So, but if we write a comprehensive plan that says, maybe we'll allow up to, you know, this number of feet, these, this number of stories, then we are going to have this fight all over again from the start when we get to the UDC. Because, you know, of course we are. So I just don't see the point in being so specific. I see specifics as a one-way ratchet towards tying the city's hands and making it less possible for us to get what we want out of this process. So that is really why I said what I said at the beginning, which is that I think it's better if we keep this high level. All right, all that said, I did want to say that, you know, most of the direction in the concepts that have been shared and hopefully in the draft that will be released soon, I think that, I think the city is headed in a really good direction with the comprehensive plan for the most part. And I'm sure I'll be back with more specific critiques. But I just want to keep perspective that I think that what we're doing is like 90% great. And I really thank you for it and look forward to this continuing. Thank you.
Thank you. Grateful for your engagement. Mr. Lowe.
I am sure that everyone here feels like they've aged at least a year. I know I have. Not the least because it's after midnight and so I actually have aged a year. But I really appreciate the in-depth discussion that there's been tonight. I just want to say there are already three or four stories single-family houses in Ann Arbor. So I don't see why if we're Ann Arbor. So I don't see why, if we're, if we're already allowing those, why we wouldn't allow three or four-story multiplexes. I'm, I'm of the opinion that, that this shouldn't be limited. If anything, we should, we should have height minimums, but suppose that, that's a fight for the next comprehensive plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else present that would like to speak at this time? Welcome back.
Yeah, hey, sorry. My name's Chris. I live in Runnymede-Wilber. My career in city politics is now five hours and nine minutes long. I did just want to say, just as a quick general observation, and I promise I will make this quick. Again, my career's five hours long. I've seen what I perceive to be three pretty big disconnects between, I think, our planners, planning commission, and council, in terms of communication. Like, I walked into this, I thought there was a comprehensive land, he was playing like released in stone. I thought it was out. I was like, what did I miss? Where am I? And then Ms. Mills over here, I think is asking, raising the best points, making the, the most logical assertions and questions. The only thing I would remiss, if I weren't to add this, I'm probably the minority in the sense that, you know, I'm not, I don't want to like, put people in a box, but I'm not an older person, but I do tend to be more moderate. So if I'm being honest, like, I'm probably not super in favor of a lot of high-density housing in single-family neighborhoods. I mean, I've owned my home for 15 years. I live in a modest neighborhood. I'm not wealthy, but I stretch the imagination. But I worked really, really, really hard to have a little tiny peaceful home, right? And I'm not saying that all of a sudden, these multi-houses are going to come in and disrupt it. That's not what I mean. Because I also do believe that you have to grow and change, or else you're going to be left behind in the dust. Like, there's no other way around that. Like, you have to be willing to modernize and make changes, because those that, that move live, right? And those that don't move on, just kind of grow old and dusty and pass away. And so it clearly has to be some changes. But I'd be remiss if I didn't mention one thing, and I just wanted you guys to think about this going forward, is that what so often happens is that wealthy neighborhoods become magically exempt from some of these things, right? And I, and I know that seems crazy to say, right? But we all know there's three or four uber-rich neighborhoods in this town, right? Whether it's Ann Arbor Hills, or Upper Burns Park, or even some parts of Water Hill, or Barton Hills, which I guess that's kind of its own separate thing. But I want to make sure, you know, like look at Ann Arbor Hills. Those lots are massive, right? Massive lots. Those, that neighborhood shouldn't be exempt, right? Things like, I know we have the TC1 corridor, and we have, we have made great strides in, you know, more mixed-vu spaces and bigger buildings. But I want to make sure what so often happens is small, middle-class, or poor neighborhoods, there's really no poor neighborhoods in the sound, but I mean, you know what I mean, become targeted, right? And I think we really need to consider going forward, that everyone should share in this burden equally. So that's all.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else present that would like to speak to the commission at this time? With that, do we have any remote callers?
There are two hands raised, Mr. Chair. Phone number ending in 5, three hands raised. Phone number ending in 534E, four hands raised. You have permission to address the planning commission.
Good evening again, this is Councilmember 1202 Traver Street in Lower Town, Ann Arbor. Thank you for the very frank discussion about the memo. And I'll make a comment as somebody who's developed in multiple communities. You do want to have a bit more certainty in your comprehensive plan, and not just leave it extremely vague, waiting for the zoning code. One of the things that you're going to do is you're going to delay development. Developers are watching, of the scopes, or land speculators out there looking, which property should they define? Developers are looking at, what can I do? Well, if they don't know, if it's left open and vague, then you're just adding another year onto uncertainty for allowing them to get a project started by starting to acquire the land based on what they think they can achieve, the yield that they can get on the lot. So there's pros and cons to doing it. Another way to look at it is, who are the players here? I know there was some discourse there between who owns the project here, between staff and planning commission, but let's remember, this goes to city council, and city council has to vote to adopt the plan or reject the plan. City council are the elected representatives of the citizens. The citizens are supposed to be a part of this process. This is a community process. If the elected representatives of the citizens don't feel that the citizens' interests are properly reflected in the plan that you give to them, the city council people could simply reject the plan, and you send it back to you to ask for more specifics. So again, you may be delaying the whole process if you don't put a bit of specificity into it. The zoning code is essentially the translation of the comprehensive plan into enforceable legal language. Now, it doesn't have to have every last detail in there, but if you don't have enough detail, it sure makes it really hard to translate it, quote-unquote, into the enforceable language. You're really making it up all over again as you go on, and you're going to have all kinds of meetings with all kinds of citizens. And you may find yourself with a delay there, if you can't agree, get agreement amongst yourselves, and again, with city council, who ultimately has to be the final approval of whatever you do. So it really behooves all of us to put some level of specificity into this plan. What's the definition of low-rise residential? You know, a range, something. If you don't do that, my bet is that this plan just gets delayed at multiple points.
I apologize. Your speaking time has ended.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hannah Rose Nanton-Gop, you have permission to address the planning commission. Gopko, excuse me.
Hi, planning commission. My name is Hannah. I spoke earlier. I'm at 615 Oswego Street in Ann Arbor. It's the Housing Graduate Cooperative that I mentioned earlier. And I want to bring up a point about landlords that are using things like RealPage, and what our city has the capacity to do to prevent or limit that in order to support more affordable housing. Four cities so far in, in the country have banned RealPage and other algorithmic rent-setting software like that. So I just want to put that on your radar, that that's something that we need to be considering, along with rapidly building high-density housing. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other callers on the line?
Shannon Lau, you have permission to address the planning commission for three minutes.
Hello. Thank you for sticking around. Hopefully this will be quick. I'm Shannon, 2870 Oakdale Drive. That's in Pittsfield Township. I live car-free, and whenever I want to go downtown, it's like a 40-minute commute, because I think it's less walk a lot. Yeah, I, I mean, a lot of things to take away from this tonight. And one thing that really resonated with me in that last, maybe hour or so, is Commissioner Mills, I believe, who talked about, we need to converge on a definition of low-density housing. And it seems like a lot of the confusion, different voices from the past five-ish hours, is the confusion around that. And I do support the idea of using visuals, or even a value, like values-based communication method with the public on what that vision looks like. Because if this is like a vision, you know, a plan, not, it's all really in concept, then I'm maybe, like, maybe I'm coming as a software engineer here, but like thinking about this as, like, a vision board in some sense, a brainstorm, and maybe from a design perspective, like just giving a hypothetical of what these spaces look like can be beneficial. So maybe that's like tree-lined streets as like part of the visual, or, you know, maybe like emphasizing that the goal here is density enough to encourage walking and biking over driving. And that assuages a lot of concerns for congestion and sun pollution. Or like with smaller setbacks, you can have visuals of like porches that are closer to the sidewalks, and that increases social collisions within the community. And I guess the goal here is like, how do we dream up the benefits of these spaces, so that it helps diminish the fear that seems to be so pervasive across the city? Yeah, that's all I have. Hope you all get a good night's rest. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other callers on the line?
There's one other caller, Mr. Chair. One moment. Phone number ending in 828. You have permission to address the planning commission.
Hi, my name is Kathy Strachan, and I live in Ward 1. And I don't envy you guys with what you have in front of you at all, but I also would like to acknowledge Commissioner Mills and her comment on, I also agree. I think this low-rise density definitely needs to be defined, so that people know what you're talking about. I live in a single-family neighborhood, and a three-story house next to me would be fine, but I wouldn't want a four or a five-story next door next to me. I think having that specificity will decrease the vagueness, the uncertainty people have, possibly distrust about fading and switching. And I also would like to suggest that the, I came into the meeting like way after the first public comment, but if you had more than 50 people, there are a lot, there are 50 people out there that, that made a point of getting there. And I think that this is something where the people who live here need to be heard, and there's all sides to it, but there's got to be a common ground somewhere and some compromise. And, and I hope that in the quest for, for housing, that we're not destroying that single-family neighborhood, because that's something I, like the one gentleman spoke to, that's something that I want, and I like that. That's why I moved in this area. And, and I really don't want that, for a character of that neighborhood destroyed. And so I think when density does come into the single-family neighborhoods, it has to be in the context of the style of houses that are around, so that it's not this thing that stands out. But anyway, I don't want to belabor a lot of things that people said, but that, I really want to emphasize the clarity that you can provide for that definition, and I think will help you get support for however you define that. People will know what you're talking about. It'll help you come to some consensus. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other callers? All right. With that, we're going to close public comment. We're going to move on to Agenda 12, Commission Proposed Business. Commissioner White?
I just have two things. I have just two things. I also want to go to bed. Number one, our bylaws are wrong on our website. I'm sorry to bring this up, because it was the Neighborhood Association member who thought they still had five minutes. We changed that in 2023, and then we changed our bylaws again in 2024. But the current website is showing the 2021 bylaws, which shows that they have a five-minute one. So I'd like to ask that we get that updated as soon as possible. And then the second thing I wanted to ask was, could we update the FAQ on the comp plan to include the presentation that the Waste Management Group presented at the council work session, which speaks to the infrastructure? There are a lot of questions that our neighbors have about infrastructure, and they are answered in that presentation that they gave at the work session, because they are planning for a more dense, growing city.
Thank you. Steph, we're good on that one? Okay, cool. And just to kudos everybody on their stamina on making it through this meeting, and just wanted to say, we have a brilliant staff. So thank you for all of your hard work on this. With that, any other Commission Proposed Business?
Agreement.
We're going to move to the last item, which is adjournment, moved by Commissioner Abrams, seconded by Commissioner Hammerschmidt. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
We are adjourned.